If you'd like to call into the Zoom meeting, the number is 929-205-6099. Our first public hearing is Seven Porter Road. Daniel White for a special permit under 195.9 conformity to construct an addition that will not meet the side setback and any other relief that may be deemed necessary. Good evening.
Good evening.
If I could get your name and address for the record?
Mike DeSalvo, 660 Gorton Street in Dunstable. I'm the builder representing the client for this project.
Excellent. What is the plan? I think that Colleen is going to try to get it up on the board.
I have. Yeah, all of these coming up. Let's see if, uh... So that's, um, I gotta pull up his other plan, the survey.
Right, just above it.
I think that's the first one I sent you, Colleen. Doesn't show the garage on it.
It doesn't show the garage?
Not on that one.
Who is, uh...
The link has it.
In the link, if you want to go to the link and get it from the application.
H3.
Sorry, guys.
Yeah, that's right.
It was all up, and now it's disappeared. It's so much easier to use two screens.
So it looks like you're going to put it on a bedroom addition out the back and then they extend the garage, or is that a garage now?
Yes, so there's an existing garage now. We're going to extend it to a two-car and then do a bedroom addition off of the back corner because we're utilizing a good footprint of the existing bedroom in that back corner. That's why we're increasing the size of the existing bedroom. We're utilizing that existing to get access to get back to the...
There'll be a hallway or something.
Exactly, yep. Yep, the bedroom's already nine by 12, nine by 13 now, so it's already a small bedroom. So taking a hallway out of it's going to make it a useless room.
Lots of room to be in bedrooms, so...
Yep.
And it looks like you're staying just under the requirements for a variance, which is excellent.
I just have a couple of letters.
Oh, okay. Does anyone have any questions of the applicant at this time? Steve?
Nope.
I'll read the letters in. The engineering department has, uh, see attached letter.
That's building.
Well, this says see attached letter.
Yeah, it's right behind it.
Oh, what's building? Okay, the building department has an attached letter. Dear Mr. White, please find this letter as a dial under Town Bylaws 195.8, nonconforming uses and structures, Massachusetts General Laws 48, subsection 6, to your proposed addition at the above-regarded address. As per the required setbacks for the District RB, you would need 25 feet from the side lot lines. As per your certified plot plan, only 21.2 inches are provided. You can appeal this decision with the Board of Appeals within 30 days of this notice. Thank you. Jose Negron, Building Commissioner. So before us for a special permit is meant that, uh...
Well, isn't, are you building the proposed garage as well, right?
Yes.
So you're doing two things.
Yeah, I mean the...
The proposed garage, which would put you at 20 point, so that's a variance.
No, it's 20.3 because they get the 20% reduction, which is five feet. So they need 25 feet.
Oh, 20.3, I apologize.
Right.
Okay.
Yeah, it's just over.
Sorry.
No, no problem.
Engineering. Engineering must be worried about my reading, huh?
Well, where's your glasses, Chairman?
Right, I don't need them, huh? Engineering's taking care of everything.
I can read that from here.
Engineering notes, no new cuts in the pavement of Porter Road are permitted until the end of 2023 because the road was paved in 2018. Contact the DPW Highway Division, determine if a road opening permit is needed to add the driveway onto a newly paved road. All proposed utility connections should avoid going into the road. The proposed addition will be over the existing sewer service. The applicant must contact the DPW Sewer Division for permits to move the sewer service. Consideration should be made to install roof drain drywells or equivalent to infiltrate roof runoff. Erosion control devices must retain the sediment on site. These must be installed prior to any work or demolition. Let's get everybody to...
You want them all like that these days?
The, uh, the Center Water District has no comments and the Board of Health has no comments. Those are the letters I have for this application.
Do you see that it's written as a special permit?
It is for a special permit because it's 20.3. It would be a variance at 25, but you get a 20% relief where you can ask for a special permit, so there...
I'm sorry, you're, I'm sorry. I've got it reversed. I apologize.
Yeah, they're just making it, but they are making it.
It's always a question. I always advertise the variance because then you can always come back.
Right, but this is a special permit and I believe the request and the ask is correct.
Yes.
I'm going to, I guess, open this up to the audience to see if anyone has any questions or concerns regarding this application. Seeing none?
Motion to close the public hearing.
Motion to close the public hearing, my Nancy. Seconded by Jamie. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Uh, it's pretty straightforward. I don't know if anyone has any questions. I think, uh, it's good. We don't have any opposition from neighbors on either side.
I'll make a motion to approve the application for seven...
Sorry, can we just, who's voting? Charlie's not, Charlie's not on, right?
Right.
Do we only need five?
Five to vote, and Steve is here. Charlie, I don't know if he answered my text.
Yeah, voting.
Sorry, sorry, go ahead, Jamie.
Yep, no, it should be Erin?
Yep, yep.
Okay. Uh, so, yeah, I'd make a motion to approve the application for Seven Porter for the special permit under 195.9 to include the letters written.
I'll second the motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Passes?
Good luck with it.
Thank you.
Have fun.
See ya.
Best. Our next application is 127 Parker Road, Spiro Skinsakos for a special permit. I got it? I should be one of those guys that call you at night. I never get it right. For a special permit under 195.61, limited accessory apartment to construct a new addition for the LAA and any other relief that may be deemed necessary. Good evening.
Good evening, how are you today?
Good. If I could get your name and address for the record?
Spiro Skinsakis, 127 Parker Road, Chelmsford, Mass.
Thank you.
Do you want to look that up or you going to hold it?
I used to have a big machine.
I do, it's right, it's right in the closet behind them.
I'll just hold it up. We'll just miss this.
It's right in the closet there.
Don't worry about it, talk.
Sure? I'll hold it. That's right.
Spend all that damn color on that.
Give it a good presentation.
Yeah, well, so I'm, my name is Pat Flaherty. I'm a surveyor and engineer and, um, I colored this exhibit. And, uh, I guess I wanted to show that the yellow portion here is the existing portions of the structure, you know, what's, what's on the ground now. And the orange is the proposed garage within law apartment over. And so we're not asking for any special, not asking for any variance for side yard, front yard.
No dimensional relief?
No dimensional relief right now, no. It would just be the, uh, the limited accessory apartment.
And do you know, Ms. Flaherty, the size of the in-law, what the square footage is?
Uh, it says 720 feet.
Yes, it's 720 feet. It is, sorry, it is 29 by 36, but with the dorm is, obviously the law is, it can only be 720 feet, so we, we made it that.
Right, you actually allowed 750.
Okay.
And you can exclude, and I don't know what's in the plan, I haven't seen it, the stairways and the bathrooms with the, uh...
Okay, but the plan that we have, I believe that I gave Colleen six sets, that's what it was, 720 square feet, which is, we're fine with that.
Yeah.
Yep, we won't have to grant any relief for that.
So one of the other points I want to make is that a lot of this property is in the wetlands area, so they're limited to where you can put, put an addition or put anything. And we will be going to conservation with it.
After, after.
After this, yeah.
Is that the green?
That's the green, that's the edge of the wetland, yeah. So it's a two-acre lot, it's a big lot, but there's maybe 40% wetlands there.
Yeah, we're in front of conservation, obviously, when I built the home and then when I put a pool in and we put in a cabana, we went in front of conservation then as well, so this will be our third time.
Okay.
Yeah, so the building further away.
Yeah.
It seems far, how close do you have to be for, to have to go in front of conservation?
Uh, 50 foot requires a visit, 25 foot is the no build area.
Is that not more than 50 feet? It looks far.
I think it's, um...
It's the 100 foot.
David, what is it?
100 foot, you still need to go in front of conservation?
Wow.
Yeah.
Okay.
You can do things 100.
Yeah, I was going to say, I thought 50 was in my head and I was like, that looks like it's at least 50 feet. I don't know.
I think we're at 70 feet.
You're at 70, yeah.
Oh, 70.
Yeah.
So they're still under 100.
We're not going to worry, conservation, they have their own.
Just curious.
Yeah, that's not an issue.
Just increasing my learning curve over here, sorry.
Uh, does the board have any questions of the applicant?
Do you mind? I'm sorry, I'm trying to, come on. Don't mind me.
Up in the upper left corner, it gives a little better view of the house and the garage.
Oh, so you're adding the garage and the accessory on top of the garage?
On the second floor, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay.
And there's, there's access, there's access through the existing house and also access through the garage.
This is a plan, you want to see this as well? So that's the existing right here.
This is crap.
Garage, and it's basically to connect it, it's a catwalk right to my master, which is above his garage.
Oh, I see, okay. Okay, so this is yours.
Crooked pit.
Hmm?
A crooked...
I think it gives it a little more...
I'm just messing with that.
It's not straight, I think it gives a little more dimension and then to back out of the garage, and we're actually going to eliminate a lot of pavement as well because all we're here is all the pavement, so now like, when my mother drives, I'll just go and go that way and I'll go that way, or maybe all cut out will actually look better than what it does.
Do you have any questions, Erin? I see you're left out of this.
All right. Sure.
The garage is 750, but the second floor has...
Oh, oh, there is an existing garage.
This is...
Oh, so you're adding like a, you're...
Basically making the same, you know, put it, look, try to keep the same look, and then we have two dormers on like the side because, you know, I have a dormer here now on the side of this house now, so like expand.
So it'll kind of even out?
Yeah, I want it to match, you know?
Right.
So it'll come to the same line in the back of the house?
Yes, yeah, and then I did a little kitty like I was telling them like I...
So they drive in this way?
Well, no, they drive straight in, but now it'll actually eliminate some pavement over here, so like if my mother's here, she'll go back out of garage and vice versa. I'm going to have to go in there.
I saw, thank you.
That looks good, I know your house.
Yeah, on the back is like a full, like a...
Thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Yeah, no, I'm good, thanks.
I'm sorry, who, who were you building this for?
I'm sorry.
That is my mother right there. My brother right there lives across the street.
Are you really sure you want to do that?
Yeah.
She's a liar.
What do you, what do you, um...
They've been working together for 40 years.
She lives a couple houses down and her boyfriend got sick of COVID and he's still in the hospital, so their family decided they're going to put the house on the market. So she, she used to go with Aunt Karen, who used to be the chief, the police, so then he's still in the hospital, so what do I, you know, she lives two houses down and the daughters want to sell the house, so she's not going to buy a house. My brother lives across the street, I have four kids, my brother's got three kids, so it's like, what are you doing? You got to do it.
Good signs, good signs. I only pray my son, I only pray my son does the same when it's my time.
Everybody loves Raymond.
Trouble with it. If there are no further questions from the board, I'll read the letters at this time. Center Water has no concerns for 127 Parker Road. Send the engineering a letter. Christine, I'll bring my glass. Engineering has notes, no new cuts into the pavement of Parker Road are permitted until the end of 2024 because the road was paved in 2019. Contact the DPW Highway Division, determine if a road opening permit is needed to add through the driveway to the newly paved road. All proposed utility connections should avoid going into the road. Consideration should be made to install roof drain drywells or the equivalent to infiltrate roof runoff. Erosion control devices must retain the sediment on site and protect the swale in the backyard. These must be installed prior to any work or demolition. A professional land surveyor stamp is required on the site plan.
Hmm.
Do we have one of those?
Okay, I have also, those are the only letters I have. I think the police have fallen off the notation list. We haven't seen them in a while.
Planning board he does, but not so much this, there's no real concern.
To whom it may concern, from Mark and Kayla Marata, 125 Parker Road, Chelmsford. Please accept this letter as acknowledgement and support of the current plans for the development of a garage and in-law apartment by Spiro Skinsakosis, 127 Parker Road, Chelmsford, Mass., 01824. We have discussed his design, plan, and build, and we are comfortable with the proposal. Spiro has been an exemplary neighbor and a great example of someone who looks to improve his continuous, improve his continuously community. So it says, I don't know what I mean.
They went to suffer too, so.
It's kept that day.
They're to the right, so if you looked at my driveway, they're to the right, that house right there with the white fence.
The primary effect of the butter?
Yes, and then the next letter is from the butter right behind us as well.
Okay. If there are any questions or concerns, please don't hesitate to reach out to me directly. Warmest regards, Mark Marata. This is James Ellis, 7 Fay Street, Chelmsford. To whom it may concern, we are in favor of Spiro building an in-law apartment for his mother on his property. Sincerely, James Ellis. And they're the only two letters I have, in favor or opposition. I'll open this up to the audience and see if anyone would like to speak in favor or opposition to this application.
Waiting for mom to step up and say no. My oldest son.
You don't want to, you don't want to, yeah. Okay, seeing none, I could look for a motion to close the public hearing?
Make a motion to close the public hearing?
I second the motion.
Seconded by Jamie. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Do you feel like a motion tonight? Are there further questions?
No. Okay.
That looks like a motion.
I'll make a motion. I'll make a motion to approve the special permit under 195.61 for a limited accessory apartment at 127 Parker Road.
No letters?
No letters.
There are letters?
Yeah.
Taking into account the letters. Yep.
I second.
Seconded by Steve. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Good luck with it.
I have a question for you, so by times...
Too late.
Too late?
Too late.
Too late, no change it now.
Well, if I tie the sawing, because I already have saw going to the street, I can tie in front of my house, correct?
What I believe is you'll have a Y before you get into the roadway.
And I have, I have a well, so I don't need to go on the street for the well either.
Right.
Needing it for water.
I don't know if you're going to do a separate meter for that.
No, just one.
Yeah, so you don't, you shouldn't need to disrupt the water.
Yeah.
And the sewer would be connected somewhere on property as opposed to in the roadway.
Yeah, so I can connect it to everything.
There's no, there's no need to go in the road to put a Y in.
Thank you very much.
Okay, good luck with it.
Thank you.
The permit's through the sewer department though.
Okay. But they have a 30-day appeal process for this board, or does it, is it...
That's correct.
Okay, and then how?
And honestly, it's at your peril, so if you decide to move ahead and don't feel there's going to be opposition, uh, no one would file an appeal, then you can move ahead. If, if an appeal is filed, that will be stopped, so as far as you get would be at your peril.
What do you mean by that? I don't understand.
So basically you'll sign a, a letter saying that you are within the 20-day appeal period?
Yeah.
Where people can still say no?
Okay.
And you're going forward at your own risk.
Okay.
Nobody spoke against it, so it's highly unlikely that someone's going to file anything.
Okay.
So at the 20 days, then you're all set.
Okay.
You can wait, it just, if you wanted to move ahead in any direction you can, you do it if they file an appeal. Because the land court, it's pretty, pretty involved to file an appeal for the Board of Appeals, so...
Thank you very much for everything, that was, meant the luck to us.
Thank you.
Have a good night, good luck with it.
Thank you very much, everyone.
Very well.
Have fun.
I cut through there a lot.
Our next, uh, application is 356 Old Westford Road. Christopher Hager for a variance under 195.9 conformity to construct an addition will not meet the side setback and any other relief that may be deemed necessary. Good evening.
How are you?
I get your name and address for the record?
I always print them up.
Please, why don't you tell us what you have planned? It's a garage you're proposing?
Yeah, detached garage, 24 by 24. It's directly in line with the garage.
You have, uh...
I have a driveway, I'm sorry.
So you're really not in line with your existing home? Is that, is that a dimension we can get here? 34, 39?
Yeah, it looks angled.
The end of the garage is 39 feet from the property line. At the front of the house, it's 43. What I'm trying to do is find a way to do this as a special permit as opposed to a variance.
Sure.
If we can get to 20 feet, we can, 20 plus, we can do that.
Yeah, the 20 foot would bring me, um, I believe that's foreign change space-wise to line up with the house. So if it was exactly in line, that, that would be roughly the 20 foot.
And what, what is there, I haven't seen, maybe we can go to Google and look, what's the problem with moving it over so it is a special permit?
Um, it just... If there really isn't a problem, my first option...
Do you want him to have him, you just sent me?
Sure, yeah.
A letter of hardship? I have never seen one of those.
Are you prepping him, Colleen?
Uh, I'll interrupt you to read this into the record. And this is from, uh, from you, Chris, is, oh, Chris and Brittany?
Yeah, the family.
Uh, this is from the applicant. A letter of hardship regarding 356 Old Westford Road, falling with list we have complied for applying for a variance for attached garage. In 2016, when Brittany's parents built this home, they added eight feet of fill to raise the grade to ease pouring, to ease pouring of foundation since there were many large boulders and ledge in the yard. The current setbacks would only allow us to place the garage more towards the back of the house rather than the side. However, since we have a walkout basement, there was not any fill placed in the backyard. At the end of the driveway, where the current turnaround is, there is plenty of fill to ensure easy digging. Two, placement of the main home. When the home was constructed, it was placed in the center of the lot as expected, since there were no plans at the time for a detached structure, that leaves us with 43 feet of land on the side of the house, which if we met the proper setbacks would mean the potential garage would overhang six feet behind the original home, which would impede on the functionality of the garage. Aesthetics, you feel that if we met proper setbacks, it would not be aesthetically pleasing to our home and the rest of the neighborhood. Four, the safety of children. We feel as though having part of the garage door placed behind the home would cause unnecessary danger to the kids playing in the yard. Having a full visual of the vehicles and lawn equipment would potentially deter any accidents. I hope that you would grant us this variance so we continue to build our family and forever home. Sincerely, Chris, Brittany, Emma, Mason, and Chloe Hager. And that's the letter.
So we're having a 23.7-foot garage up to the house? I guess I don't, I, can we see like a Google map, like?
Yeah.
3D like?
I just, I pulled up the topography because it does slope towards the back.
I seen that.
But do you want to see the satellite?
So, yeah, so like right up, I guess why, why, why so far back and not next to the side of the house where the driveway is?
Well, if it's detached, it has to be 10 feet, so the 12 is not unreasonable at all.
As opposed to attached? I mean, I guess why the preference from a detached as opposed to attached?
Well, because there is an, there's a garage already that you pull into.
Okay.
So if you take, if you drive into the garage, you would pull to the right, I'm driving to the driveway, you'll pull right.
Gotcha.
And there will be a second garage in back.
Gotcha, okay.
Is the existing garage a one-car garage or two?
It's a two compact car garage.
I was going to say it looks small.
So she has an SUV.
Yep.
And that's, that, that's it. There's nothing else, along with the kids' vehicles, there's nothing.
And you couldn't put the...
We're struggling with several of these, so that's definitely a concern because we'll hear another one, uh, I think next or tonight. I think I'd strongly suggest the topography of adding fill is a, it has potential, but it's not really very strong. I mean, I would like to see you move the garage over so it was even with the house or maybe even slightly overhanging so that you do get to that 20-foot, one inch would be suitable. You're going to get your foundation pinned regardless, so, um, you know, that would be what, what I would suggest is a special permit is a lot easier than a variance, and we're, we're struggling with several of these that are frankly almost identical, so it's hard to say, uh, you know, if there was a specific reason that, I think we're talking about like with the 20-foot one, uh, we're talking about move it over 6.1 inch, six feet one inch, and it, it's hard to tell because I can tell that the, the line isn't parallel, but that's probably like five feet in between the two. Now, you, you, you have a gap between the two? So if that was brought over right to the edge, I think you could qualify for a special permit.
Right, I mean, I, we did go over that. The ideal situation was fifteen, I'm not opposed to going to twenty, so.
'Cause even the garage doors wouldn't, your house wouldn't block your garage doors, 'cause you'd still have the frame of the garage itself, so the doors would still be fully visible.
Right.
Well, and it's placed further back.
Which was one of your concerns.
No, my, I said that, that was with the twenty-five foot.
Oh, okay.
So he's going to, to completely not need any, any relief whatsoever. But if you go for a special permit, you can go twenty percent, which brings you down to twenty. But if you're comfortable with that, I'm, I'm gonna suggest we continue this. Uh, have the engineer place it where it belongs. I spoke with Mr. Haverty after the last meeting, and he said, really should have the documentation. So I'm gonna request that you, uh, continue this. We get the garage so it's, it's twenty foot, one inch, uh, off the line, and I wouldn't see any, any resistance whatsoever.
Okay.
That being said, um, do we wanna go in the audience and go through that? In case someone would like to speak and they don't have to come back? Does anyone that would like to speak in favor or opposition to this application? Come upstairs to the podium, please. Good evening, if I could have your name and address for the record?
Glenn Brigham, three fifty Old Westford Road, uh, bought the property right beside three fifty-six.
Okay, are you to the left of the property?
Uh, yes.
Okay.
You said Glenn, I'm sorry.
Glenn, Glenn Brigham.
On the garage side.
Right. So I'm on the, the side where they wanna put the garage, basically.
Yep, they're just trying to get acclimated.
So I have a couple of comments, concerns, and suggestions I'd like to make to the board, if you would allow me to speak.
Certainly.
Um, go to the next slide, please. So, can I approach the monitor? So this is, um, the land survey, the plot plan that was done back in September twenty-three of twenty-one. And this is the garage that, uh, Chris is proposing to put down. It's a twenty-four by twenty-four, twenty-foot high garage. My concern is that, uh, it's all about snow, okay?
Mm-hmm.
So, without the garage there, a snow push goes right over the edge of the, the land, the end of the gar, um, driveway, and it drops off down. Now, you can't see that topology because it's a two-D map, but I haven't plotted, I'll show you in a minute. If the garage goes here, then there's no place to put the snow, and you just start plowing up. This is my, my house down in here, um, and this is the boundary. Then there's like an eight-foot to, like, like twelve or thirteen-foot swath of land that's on a taper as it gets closer down to this end. And I think, you, we all know what happens in the winters here, we get a hundred inches, we could get, you know, more, you know, right? In February, you start getting some, some melting, you get some runoff, um, with some rain. And I'm, I'm afraid that that stuff's gonna, you know, drain into my, my property. So if you would go to the next slide. So this is, um, the present condition now, where, uh, you've got this driveway that comes in. This is a local contour map that I got from, from the department here, from, uh, the town. And these are all, um, elevation gradients, so each one's about two feet drop. So as you come back to the back of the yard, you're dropping two feet of swath. Right now, the, the snow is pushed right down the driveway and off the end, and it, it comes right off the end of the, uh, on the lawn. And when it melts, it follows the contour of the land, and that works great. I've noticed in the past, and I mentioned all this to, to Chris earlier, so, you know, we had a conversation about this. I do get a little bit of runoff here. It's not a lot, it's minor, but under a really heavy driving rain, you can see a trickle of water coming down through the shrubs out of there. And that's just the rain. So I'm afraid that, you know, if we start loading that up with snow, it'll be an issue. So if we go to the next slide, please. So if Chris puts his garage right here, which, I mean, typically that's a fantastic spot, I mean, you put it at the end of your driveway, that's where you'd want it to drive right in. My concern is that if it's there, it's gonna block any snow plowing effort. And what happens with all the snow? It piles up all along here. And if you get a lot of snow and you can't keep pushing it, or you try to, it's gonna keep pushing further and further, potentially building up or into the boundary. And then we have this issue where, um, you know, added snow melting will pool, and it'll potentially flood this area. So this, this, as you've mentioned, this land has been raised about eight feet with backfill. And if you stand here and you look across, it's about four feet or so tapering, it's only maybe about fifteen feet. So it's a pretty steep grade coming down. If we start, you know, plowing out here against here and building up the banks, I think a lot of that, um, snow when it starts melting gonna come down here in my area, which is below that, is flat, and it tends to want to pool and create some kind of a, um, you know, a little pond if, if we get a lot of, of snow and a lot of driving rain. So I think the, the main thing here is, we don't want any impact on a property from any kind of like watershed. And that's the biggest concern I have, um, at this point.
Which way does the driveway slope?
Oh, so the driveway slopes, so it slopes a little bit towards the road, 'cause this is higher than grade. And then it also pitches this way. So when it, I get a heavy rain, everything from here.
The natural runoff heads to your, towards your property.
Everything goes, the walkways, everything goes towards my property at this time. So, so that's my concern. If you go to the next chart, um, I have a few suggestions that I think, you know, maybe we could talk about, or maybe this is something you wanna consider. I think you had mentioned something about if you just kind of moved the garage a little bit, tweaked it a little bit, maybe inboard, to allow, you know, snow push to come down through. Then when it melts, it just kind of follows the contour of the land and it tapers down, ends up in your backyard, and nobody gets impacted, uh, by that. I, I think this would be a, a decent, you know, option. Um, I don't think there's any cost impact on it. You still have your full yard access, there's really no like land hardship or anything, and I don't think you need a, a special, a permit or variance to do it. One more option coming up is the next slide, which is just, you know, square to the side of the existing garage. It's there, still leaves you your, your entranceway through here, but that leaves you a full swath to just continue plowing your snow. And the nice thing, frankly, about this is that, I mean, this, if I was living, this is what I would choose, because you don't wanna ever have to, like, have a lot of snow and then you can't plow any further, and you need somebody to come and take it away. This, you can keep plowing back, and you don't have to worry about how soon it's gonna land. And then the final option is just a, an attached, which is more or less, this is the next slide, which would be more or less a convenience factor, 'cause you have, you know, walk out of your house, you're in the garages, and you're there, but I understand that, uh, that doesn't belong to you. Yeah. The idea what you wanna do, and that's a preference thing. So those are, those are my concerns, my suggestions, and my comments for this. Um, it's all about watershed runoff pooling of the water, um, from the, the, the snow and the rain together combined.
Is that a pool in your backyard?
No.
No.
What, what is that yellow building?
That's a shed.
The shed?
Shed, shed.
Okay.
This is all flat in here. Um, so, uh, I think the last slide is just basically a summary. I think it's, you know, the current situation works the way it is. Um, adding a structure right at the end, I think would impact the watershed of the, the land.
Now, just a question, he's, he's agreed to, um, considering moving it back towards his property, the additional five feet. Do you think that would improve the situation? I mean, you're adding five feet.
Because I'm not sure, if you go back to like,
This is almost the width of a plow.
If you go back to like the third slide or something, or one of these.
Go back to the, if you go back one, one more?
So Chris, move.
So now, if he's gonna put it in five feet?
This way?
Yep.
It would be flush with the, the end of the garage would be flush with the end of the garage now, so they would be in parallel.
Do you think that would help?
Also, this edge here would be flush with this edge?
Yes.
Correct.
Do you think that would satisfy your?
I think it would probably work. I mean, as long as you get enough to, to plow, you know, by the, the garage, I think.
I mean, give him twenty.
Have you talked with Chris about how we could plow? Do you, I mean, I plow for a living, so I, I think that there's other places.
I snow blow, so I don't even.
You snow blow, so at that point, we could just put it on the, on the other side.
You put it on your front lawn? Instead of, would that help?
But it also would give him twenty solid feet now, instead of fifteen, right? It'd be twenty solid feet.
Plow's very tricky to, to position, but a snow blower, you can put the snow absolutely anywhere you choose to. So I think that in, in a normal season, you could say, okay, I can put an amount, uh, to the left side, and then when it gets to that hundred-inch storm season, you could just, you'd be doing it anyways, most likely. You'd be moving it, you know, putting it wherever it would fit.
I think the one caveat to that is, is if the house had won it for sale and somebody else owned it, and they don't do plowing, they don't do snow blowing, they do a plow, then now it's back in my lap, is I'm gonna be affected. So I think I'd like it, like to have it where, if, if moving this to the edge, like you're suggesting, works, I'm all for that, if it works. Just as long as you can, you know, plow back without.
Chris, when you snow blow, you just snow blow to the edge of your current driveway, correct?
This would be my first winter here.
Oh, okay.
So, that's why.
You don't drive on your lawn now, so you wouldn't need to snow blow it.
So you're, but you, it's always been plowed or done to the current driveway, right? So that's not going to change. You're not gonna extend your current driveway in your plan, are you?
No.
So either way, that, okay, okay.
I think, I think the gentleman's talking about the mass of, uh.
Yeah, it goes straight back. So I, no, I'm talking.
You got a hundred and forty feet of driveway, that's ten feet wide plus, and.
Yeah, yeah, that's significant.
That builds up. So, okay, thank you for hearing my concerns, I appreciate it.
No, I appreciate it, and I, I think that moving it over the six feet would, would help. And I, I think that if, especially Chris has said that it's his forever home, I take it with his word. I know, no, no one ever knows forever, but it's, uh, the plan certainly is, and.
'Cause I think it would give you almost six feet, it's still opens, almost six feet.
Six additional feet.
But it'll give you six clear feet of your consisting driveway to still push back, not be on the grass. 'Cause you're, the, the proposed doesn't cover the full end of that drive still, right?
Right. It's gonna be, it'll be twenty feet from the property line.
Right.
But, so if you push it back the five, so you're gonna have five plus feet still open drive to push back, so, I mean, I think without affecting your landscaping or whatever you've got going on in the side without, so if that would.
I think as long as we don't get impacted somewhere down the line, I'm okay with it, so.
I, I would think you're in, in pretty good shape with that, I just, uh, you know, obviously, everybody tries to be a good neighbor, but I think that, uh, I mean, technically, he cannot put snow on your land. When the snow is next to your land and it melts, I don't know how that would, I just don't know, you know, I don't know how that would work.
Yeah, just don't want any flooding, 'cause I know that.
I can appreciate it, yeah.
Okay, thank you very much.
A lot of water on Old Westford Road.
A lot of water over there. There is.
Is there anyone else who'd like to speak in favor or opposition to this application? Seeing none, I'm gonna look for a motion to continue until December, was it the second we decided?
Second. I'll make a motion to continue three fifty-six Old Westford Road to December second, twenty twenty-one.
I second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Make it a note of it.
So I just need to revise plans for next month?
Yeah, if you wanna put it so it's, it's, uh, if you talk to your, your engineer, um, just tell him you want it to qualify for a special permit, which is twenty percent less than the variance requirement. And, uh, I think that I would talk with my neighbor a little, maybe you could do a site walk with them and just sort of, you know, talk about ways to, to mitigate this, the snow, but with a snow blower, I think you're, you're really in pretty good shape to.
Throws it pretty far.
Yeah, and you can put it anywhere, that's the beauty of a snow blower. A plow does, you know, have a tendency to push in one
Right.
the easy place.
Right. Kinda control it a little more with a snow blower, for sure.
Okay, well, see you next month.
Guys, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, uh, next is a continued hearing, fourteen Kells Hill Road. This is off Nuon for a variance under one ninety-five non-conformity to construct a forty by twenty-four detached garage that will not meet the side setback and any other relief that may be deemed necessary. Is the applicant with us tonight? So, uh, seeing no applicant, we'll ask for a continuance of this project.
I make a motion to continue fourteen Kells Hill Road until next month due to.
Until the second of December?
Yes, till, to December.
Second, right, Aaron? All in favor?
Aye.
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 December second.
Push out of here, it's gonna be cool or anything.
Oh, yeah. Day off.
Do you guys need Charlie?
Our next application is twenty-four, twenty-six, twenty-eight, thirty.
Or can he do the?
He can do the muller rule.
He can sign, he can review it on video? Does Charlie have to be here for us?
No. Will you do the last one?
Yes.
Can you hurt them all, Peter, correct?
Okay, Peter's hurt them all.
Steven's hurt them all.
Okay, we're good.
Almost, you almost, you almost tried.
Take care.
Good night.
Happy Thanksgiving.
I think it is, yes. Calling, is this mic on?
There's a green light on it.
Yeah, green light's on, so that would be, anyone would, okay.
Good evening.
Good evening, Mr. Chair. How are you tonight?
Very well, thank you.
Good, members of the board. My name's Philip Eleopolis, I'm an attorney here in Chumsford. Filling in for Ryan McManus tonight, he couldn't be here, so you get second string quarterback, but we'll see how. This weekend was a good weekend for second string quarterbacks, so let's see what happens. I'm here, uh, tonight on behalf of Hard Pond Development LLC. So, uh, just kinda recapping the last meeting. Um, at that meeting, we, uh, set up a site walk, which I think most of the board was able to attend, I think, two Sundays ago. You know, as you know, we've modified the plan, uh, to reduce the number of residential structures from four to three. Creates just a two-bedroom increase, uh, three additional residents based on our traffic study. Traffic study showed six additional trips per day, uh, which it found was, was negligible, so, you know, rather than go through the legal argument, I think from what I, we've gathered, structurally, I think we're all set. We all understand that, uh, from a structure standpoint, there are pre-existing non-conforming structures, and I think the town has reached the conclusion that that, uh, non-conformity is actually being improved. It meets chapter one ninety-five, uh, section of the bylaw. So, you know, I think the, the big issue that we were dealing with before was the use issue. And it's been our argument that going from four residential structures to four residential structures is not a change in the use, uh, it's a grandfathered use, and the appeal that was filed during the summer, I think, really focuses on that issue. But to try to resolve it, understanding that the town felt there would be a impact with four structures, the applicants come forth with the three residential structure plan and, uh, with a small increase in the number of bedrooms. So, rather than get into any more legal argument, I know the board did a site walk. Is there any questions that the board has based on the site walk? Any additional information that they might be looking for tonight?
So I can tell you, we, we did do the site walk. So we did do the site walk, it was, uh, very informative, and, uh, actually, to my mind, much broader of area. It felt somewhat in the plan confined, so the site walk's very helpful to me to understand the sizing. Uh, additionally, we went through the properties themselves, the structures, and they are residential structures. They, they may have been used as a camp, but if you wanted to live there, you could. Uh, they had heat, they had electricity, they had sewer, they had water. And, uh, you know, they were surprisingly better than I imagined, which, that's why the site walk, so it was very helpful. Uh, we, we did, I think, uh, come to the conclusion that, uh, through, through a varied way, that the, uh, buildings would be allowed, uh, grandfathered. I think our concerns still lie with, um, when the lot was subdivided to take the parcel of the front, you, in a sense, removed all your frontage from the back lot. So now we have a lot without any frontage, which by definition does not meet the definition of a lot without frontage. Second lane has been proposed as the frontage. It's difficult to, to weigh that, because second lane is neither a road, uh, though looking back at the history of this, the bylaw goes on to define street, among other things, a way determined by the planning board to have sufficient width, suitable grades, adequate construction to provide for the needs of vehicular traffic in relation to the proposed use of the land and for the installation of municipal services to serve such land and the buildings erected to be erected thereon. So what it's saying is the road has to be suitable to be used. Uh, I know we have a letter from, I think, Mr. Larkin, that said that the fire department had approved the road. I think one of our determinations will be, is second lane suitable for frontage?
Well, again, we're here before you tonight seeking, um, for you to clarify the denial by the building inspector, which was based off of the issue of use. Was this, is this an, an extension of a non-conforming use such that it's more substantially detrimental to the neighborhood? I don't think before the board today is a, the question of whether there's frontage or whether the street creates adequate frontage. I think that's a legal issue that hasn't been raised by the town and is really not before this board. Certainly, town council has had the opportunity to look at it, even in the last proposal, and that's never come up as an issue.
Right, well, we've spent some time in, uh, trying to understand it and saying, what is the right of it? Um, and when you, when you look at the frontage issue that has not arisen, it's, it's still a factor in determining this to be a lot, and it's a lot that's gonna have three structures on it that theoretically was. that theoretically was grandfathered, I think it was, I think it was pre-zoning. I mean, is 1934, these pre-exist that date?
Yes.
So they're also 75 years old, so they're historic, I mean, there's still a ways for you guys to go through the process.
I believe we've already gone through, have we got the historic for demolition permit?
Yes, you went through the historical.
Yeah.
That's done.
That's done, they've approved it.
But it's really not our concern, I'm just trying to understand the whole thing. So, I think we have a twofold decision, is one, is the frontage on Second Lane suitable to consider it a lot, which I think it needs to be looked at, and then can we put three structures on a residential lot, not regardless of the grandfathering, but in concert with it? And I think that he, if I could add, Jose, did you feel that the lot with three houses on it was part of your denial? We have the denial letter, actually.
It was part of my denial, yes.
The denial was solely based on, I believe, what the building inspector found was an extension of the use, based on there being multiple residential structures on one lot. And I believe the building inspector had referred to a bylaw, a separate bylaw that states you can only have one residential lot or house per lot. But again, this, I think we've already determined that this is grandfathered, it predates the zoning. The zoning under 195, Section 80 allows for the reconstruction of four units, as long as it meets that criteria, which I believe Town Council has weighed in that it does meet the criteria of the bylaw.
I think that's a general, the general flavor, for sure.
So I think the only, in my mind, the only thing before the board tonight is going from four to three structures, increasing by two bedrooms, is that, first off, a change of use, which, again, we'd argue isn't, because you already had four residential structures, now you're gonna have three. But what we continue to contend is that, is it a change in use? And if it is a change in use, is this plan with, that you kind of have seen versus what you saw at the site walk, is this plan substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood? Now, a big piece that the board used in their decision back in the summer was, they felt traffic, that because the structures would have more bedrooms, that traffic would be increased and that traffic would be detrimental to the neighborhood. That was one of the pillars, if not the main point, of, I think, the denial when we were seeking to go from four to four. Now we've gone from four to three, we've got a traffic study that says traffic won't be an issue. So we feel there's really not any empirical evidence before the board that would indicate that it would be substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood. And I think the site walk helped to show that, you know, we're moving the houses that exist there today further away from the lot line, we're cleaning up what are really not beautifully constructed homes at this point. I mean, I don't think anyone would want to live next door to those structures, and no offense to my client, I wouldn't want to. So we're gonna move them away from the lot lines, we're gonna bring them in conformity to the current zoning bylaw in terms of setbacks. We're going to sell them, so there'll be ownership there versus what they were used for in the past, which was sort of transient rentals, which I don't think is in anyone's necessarily best interest. They'll be energy efficient. We're moving the structure closest to the pond further away, and Conservation Commission has approved this plan, and they like the fact that it's improving some of the wetland conditions that exist there today. We're gonna create some landscaping, we've incorporated into the Concom, and it's part of the PowerPoint that we submitted to the board at the last meeting. We're planting 26 trees along the border, so that will give some natural buffer to the butter on the other side of Second Lane. And I think, at the end of the day, it's gonna increase all the property values over there, because you're gonna have a nice new construction, not overly dense compared to the houses that are already in that part of the pond. And it's gonna clean up what's really, I think, an eyesore, quite frankly. So, you know, if you find that we're changing the use, which, again, I don't think we are, but that it's a substantial, not just changing it, but that it's a substantial extension of the use, going, adding two bedrooms, going from four structures to three, that it's a substantial extension, then you've got to get to the next test that says, is it substantially also more detrimental to the neighborhood? And we don't think objectively it will be, we think it'll be better for everybody. So, I would just submit, Mr. Chair, that that's the issue before the board. It's the denial by the building inspector, which was solely based off of the use piece, that he felt that we were, that it was a substantial change in the use and that it was substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood. That was all we understood the denial to be.
I would like to clarify.
I appreciate that.
Mr. Chairman, the denial of the letter was not based on the use, it was based on the increasing the non-conformity of the structures. According to my information that I gathered within the department, these structures were never intended for year-round residential, single-family use. It is my understanding that they were used for cottage purposes. Based on the other section that he cited, which you can put four struc-, multiple structures in a single lot, it is my understanding that residential districts are excluded from that.
That's correct.
I think that language is specific to commercial buildings. So my denial, which I will stand behind my denial letter, the second one, was based on multiple structures in a single residential lot and the increase of the non-conformity. I feel that these structures, they will greatly be increased. And I understand that Section 195-8E, I think we have to read it as a whole, and it says that upon a determination by the Inspector of Buildings, in this case, this proposed project does increase the non-conformity of the, whatever is there at the moment. So my denial was not based on use, and unfortunately, whether it was a typo or not, the worry's there, but the intent of the denial was based on the non-conformity increase.
So the non-conformity of the structures, not the use?
Correct.
All right, so, I mean, that makes it even simpler, because Town Council's, I think, already weighed in that the structures, as presented by the plan, are fit within Chapter 195-8E. So you've got an opinion from your own Town Council saying that he's looked at the structures, he's looked at the setbacks, and they comply with 195-8E. So if that's the concern, and then if, and if it's also based on 195-12, we're grandfathered from that statute, because they're pre-existing from that statute. So, in essence, Town Council's already said you could theoretically tear down all four structures and rebuild them in their same location, in a separate location, and you wouldn't be bound by this 195, Section 12. So, I think if we're not arguing about the use, I think it makes this board's job much easier. All we're dealing with is whether these structures, as proposed, are pre-existing structures that can be reconstructed, as long as they're in conformity with 195-8E, and Town Council's weighed in that, yes, we've met that test. And I refer you to his letter dated July 1st, where he says that they meet 195, Section 8.
Can we pull up that letter? Do we have it somewhere?
Say that again?
Can we pull up that letter that he's referring to? Town Council's letter? Yeah.
Yes, his July 1st letter.
Because we're talking about what Town Council advised us, I feel like we should...
I can read it into the record if you'd like.
Yeah, can we, or, well, I don't know, I'd just like to see it again.
Philip, do you have it?
Yeah, I do have it.
Sure, we got one on the file.
Yeah, it's a couple pages, but I think the gist of it is, the issue of structures is off the table. In his mind, it was just the use that he was arguing back in the summer.
Oh, it is several pages, okay. Dear Chairman Reedy, I am receipt of the letter submitted to the board by the applicant's attorney dated June 3rd, 2021. I have also reviewed the video of the board's meeting on June 3rd, 2021. Please accept this correspondence as my response to the issue raised in the letter from council and at the board's June 3rd, 2021 meeting. I reviewed the language of Section 195-81 of the Chelmsford zoning bylaws, which states that for single and two-family structures, under the circumstances set forth in the subsections A through D, a reconstruction, extension, alteration, or change shall not be deemed to increase the non-conforming nature of said structure. Subsection A states that reconstruction, extension, alteration, or change that conforms to the dimensional requirements of the time the structures were originally constructed shall not be an increase in the non-conformity, non-conforming nature of the structures, saying that if they pre-dote zoning, there is no requirement, they can go absolutely anywhere at the time, and they could be as many and numerous as exist. The provisions of this section in the Chelmsford zoning bylaw are more permissive than the protections offered to the pre-existing, non-conforming, single or two-family structures pursuant to General Law C 48, Subsection 6. Accordingly, it is my interpretation of this section of the bylaw that allowed reconstruction, extension, alteration, or change of the existing structures at 2430 Second Lane that complies with the then-existing front, side, and rear setbacks, in effect at the time of construction of these structures, respectively 20 feet, 10 feet, and 10 feet, will not constitute an increase in the non-conforming nature of the structures and thus does not require relief from the board. This presumes that no new conformities of other dimensional requirements, such as lot area or height, not mentioned in Section 195-81, are created by the proposed work. The next question that arises, whether the voluntary demolition of a pre-existing, non-conforming structure to be replaced by a new structure in a different location on the lot falls within the definition of relocation in the bylaw. In my review of relevant case law pursuant to General Law, Chapter 48, Subsection 6, I found a case which specifically states that the definition of reconstruction would allow reconstructing a structure at a different site. See Gideon versus Zoning Board of Appeals of Nantucket, 82 Mass., Application CT 406, 406, 2010. As noted by the land court in the subsequent case, it seems clear, given the facts of the Gideon case, that when using the term "site," the Gideon court is speaking not of a different lot, but of a different location on the site or the same lot. Gomes versus Collins Land Court, 11 miscellaneous, 446909, Order of February 7th, 2013. Grossman J., the appeals court subsequently overturned a land court decision finding that the term "alteration" did not encompass constructing a new structure in a different location that was four times as large as the original structure. Schiffenhaus versus Klein, 79, appellate court 600, 2011. The Schiffenhaus case determined that a finding from the board was required. However, this was in unusual circumstances, the proposal was not to demolish the existing structure, but instead to remove a kitchen facility from the original structure, thus making it an accessory structure to the proposed new, single-family structure. After reviewing the relevant case law, it is my interpretation that the reconstruction of a single-family structure is allowed, both pursuant to General Law 48, Subsection 6, and Section 195-8 of the Chelmsford zoning bylaws, even when such reconstruction is from a voluntary demolition of a structure. Although Section 195-8 of the zoning bylaws allows a reconstruction of single and two-family structures as of right, without the requirement of finding from the board, there is alternative grounds for the board to uphold the determination of the building commissioner that the applicant was not eligible for the issuance of a building permit without a finding from the board. In addition, constituting pre-existing, non-conforming structures, the structures located at the property collectively constitute a pre-existing, non-conforming use. Specifically, the property contains multiple principal structures on a single lot, which is not allowed use in residential zones in the town of Chelmsford. Set forth in the Powers versus Building Inspector of Barnstable, 363 Mass., 648, 653, 1973, the test to determine whether a non-conforming use will be substantially extended requires a three-part determination, consisting of whether the present use reflects the nature and prevailing when the zoning law took effect, whether there is a difference in the quality or character, as well as the degree of the present use, and three, whether the current use is different in kind and its effect on the neighborhood. An affirmative answer on any of these three questions supports a determination that the non-conforming use is not protected. So we have quality, character, and the degree of the present use.
In different kind.
Right, but that goes to the issue of whether it's a non-conforming use. We've just heard the building inspector say that his denial was based on the first part of the letter, that these were non-conforming structures. You have Town Council telling you that we meet the section of the bylaw, 195-8, as it relates to the non-conforming structures. It meets the setbacks required under 8E. Plus, he mentioned the fact that we also have to comply with lot coverage and floor area ratio, and what was presented to the board at the last meeting was, the lot coverage is 10.9%. With the current bylaw allows 15%, so we meet that. And with regards to FAR, we're at 18% with this three structure plan, and the bylaw allows for 20% FAR. So we're below lot coverage, we're below FAR, and the structures meet 195-8E based on their age and the setback requirements.
I believe you are correct.
So, we think then, if that's the reason for the denial, that it's not only within this board's power to overturn the denial, but it really, it's what should be done, based on Town Council's opinion. Don't take my opinion for it, you can take Town Council's opinion for it. And as it relates to 195, Section 12, you know, obviously, we're grandfather. We're not seeking today to come before the board and build multiple residential structures on a lot. We're just reconstructing the existing structures and meeting the dimensions, the setbacks set forth in 195-8E. So that should hopefully make the board's decision that much easier tonight.
Thank you.
Easier said than done.
Exactly.
But I do think that's, that does make it a little bit, narrows the issues for us.
I do appreciate your argument, and I think Mr. Havitt has been very helpful in clarifying a few things.
And again, I will just mention, that July 1st letter was based off of the old plan.
The four units, instead of the three.
Now we're going to the three.
So we have complied with the three as far as the size of the units?
Correct, the three still comply with the setbacks and comply, the numbers they gave you for lot area and FAR are based off of these three structures that's presented to the board tonight. So, again, you could look at, you wanna look at the use issue, that's, you know, I don't think it's before the board, based on what the building inspector stated tonight, I think it's restricted to the structures, but even if you look at that issue, adding two bedrooms, given the traffic study, you know, given the improvements that are gonna be made there, we think the board could find that it's certainly not substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood, maybe even it's better for the neighborhood.
Chairman, since they changed and removed an entire structure, which would have impacted the dimensional measurements...
By doing that, they complied.
Wouldn't we have, shouldn't they have went back and reapplied for a building permit to the...
Based on three houses.
Mr. Jose, and gotten another...
That's what we did, that what we, the denial you got...
This is the second denial.
This is the denial of the three residential structures.
Oh, I'm, okay, I'm sorry.
Yeah, so the four, the four structures were denied, and that's under appeal. We changed the plan by coming forward with three structures. This is the town building inspector's denial of the three houses.
Yeah, can I see that after, yeah, because we have the, the first letter is in the agenda.
What's the date on it?
July 27th.
July 27th.
And it states...
That's the second letter.
Oh, it is, oh, it states four houses on there.
I've got a July 29th letter, if you'd like the July 29th letter.
I think the July 29th letter targeted a couple of typos, that was...
Yeah, it might just be a typo, it says four, single family.
All right, but you have that?
That one is the letter that should say three.
So it's just a typo?
I believe so.
So there was no reference to the multiple residentials in a, multiple principals in an RB district in your second denial letter?
In the second denial letter, I, like, it was stated here tonight, I made a typo.
In the second denial letter, I, like, it was stated here tonight, I made a typo. The intent, the language began with a three. Right when I began, when I began the sentence, it goes right into three-family, single-dwelling home. Unfortunately, I made a typo on the heading and, and the title.
Oh, I think it's three single.
The second denial letter takes into consideration the three buildings.
There is three, please, yes.
But, but it does reference one ninety-five twelve at the end in the last paragraph.
It was basically the same denial, it's just.
If you deny it, the last one, what's so different with this?
Well, they've, they've met the, the current setback, well, the current setback, they've met the existing setback requirements.
We've met the, the setback requirements as set forth in one ninety-five eight E. So the town, a couple of years ago, adopted a new one ninety-five AD that created the ability of a property owner to by right reconstruct an existing structure that was built prior to, I think, nineteen fifty-four, so long as it met these set, setback requirements, not the current zoning requirements. So if you look at one ninety-five AD, it sets forth, you know, setbacks, and it meets those setbacks. As town council said, it also has to meet lot area and FAR, which it meets. So I think town council's clearly, you know, I think he actually, wasn't he at the last meeting? Town council, I think he, I think at the last meeting, he indicated to the board that there was no issue with the nonconforming nature of the structures as being proposed by this three lot plan.
I agree.
I think, I think that's issues, if that's the reason for the denial, I think it's, it's the purview of the board to overturn the denial.
But I feel like he also specifically told us to think about the use.
Right, he wanted us to consider use, and I think, my opinion was that the use is not a change at this point. There's, they're homes, I know that, they may have been camps and, I thought they were, I thought they were homes.
I just took an, I just, I, when he said this, when he cited this case law from nineteen seventy-three to determine whether a nonconforming use will be substantially extended, because as he cited, that he believed them to be cottages as opposed to year-round homes, is that, is that correct?
That is correct, yes.
That is your interpretation, a cottage is not a year-round home.
Right, and some of these structures are less than a thousand square feet. Two of them, I think, is, one is like eight hundred and eighty-eight square feet, the other one is five hundred and something square feet.
But I think your, your point, Paul said in his letter and his written letter, that changes to nature or difference in quality, character, or difference in kind are not protected under the use.
Because this is property contains multiple principal structures on a single lot, which is not allowed use in a residential zone in the town of Chelmsford. Set by this, the test to determine whether a nonconforming use will be substantially extended, based on the three parts. Because it says here, so I guess that, I'm, I'm just kind of, when you said that about you determining it, because it was in your mind, they were classified as cottages, now we're going into year-round, single-family homes. So that's where I'm getting also, when you're talking about quality, his three questions of whether the present current use is different in kind, degree, and is within, right, took effect. So, and this says from nineteen seventy-three, so.
Well, just to remind the board, when this issue first came up, I think it was back in the spring, there was a question about, hey, well, these were just seasonal, now you're going to year-round. We supplied the town, the board, and the building inspector at the time with records, electric, electrical bills, water usage, to show that these were operating year-round, and so.
And they don't have to have a size, I, I understand they're less than a thousand, but they don't, there's no requirement that you build a thousand-square-foot house.
Does that mean they were being operated year-round legally?
Of course. Of course, they're, 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 they were, they're,
They were never denied.
As they are today, they're, they're grandfathered structures, you can occupy them legally.
You can rent them?
Sure.
Is uncomfortable.
Absolutely. We could tear them down and build four residential structures with the same number of bedrooms and not even need any approval by the ZBA. The reason why we're here is because of the denial. I think, I'm assuming, that because they're larger, maybe that he feels that the structures themselves weren't, wouldn't be grandfathered to build bigger structures. But that's not the test under one ninety-five AD. It's, the test is not the size of the structure, does it meet the setback requirements? Does it meet FAR and lot coverage? So, you know, I think, again, you know, the, what's before the board is an appeal of the building inspector's denial, which is based off of the nonconforming nature of the structures, not the uses.
All right, well, I think I'm going to open this up to comments and concerns from the audience.
Is there a reason why you stopped reading the letter from the town attorney?
Just got a little dry throat, to be honest with you.
He interrupted you before the attorney had the chance to say that none of the cases they cited actually were applicable, and that you should be upholding the decision of the building inspector. Right after, he said, "See, he read the order."
I, I didn't, Brian, Brian, you stopped reading, so I just started talking. I didn't mean to interrupt you.
His case law is, is not relevant. So, I mean, maybe we should read the whole letter before we ask for a comment?
Why not? Okay, picking up where we left off, you make a valid point, sir. Continue reading. The applicant argues that the proposed reconstruction of the four single-family properties on the property, which will now be three, but we all know that, will not constitute a substantial extension of the pre-existing, nonconforming use of the four principal structures. However, none of these cases cited by the applicant address a situation where multiple principal residential structures on a single lot are proposed to be demolished and replaced with new structures containing significantly larger square footage. In the case of Oakham Sand and Gravel Corp. versus the town of Oakham, fifty-four Mass. appellate court, eighty-eighty-five, two thousand and two, the appeals court upheld a decision of the land court holding that an increase in the sand and gravel production, along with a doubling of the land area for sand and gravel removal, constituted an improper extension of a pre-existing, nonconforming use. Here, the applicant proposes to greatly expand the floor area ratio on the property. And to be clear, that has been met by the reduction of one home. So now we're down to three homes instead of four. That does comply with the floor area ratio on the property. Also, to increase the building coverage of the property. Additionally, the applicant's proposed increase in the size of the single-family structures will likely result in the increase of traffic per the property. Another potential factor in determining whether an extension of the pre-existing, nonconforming use would occur. Ultimately, the board is only being asked to rule on the validity of the determination of the building commissioner that the proposal is allowed to obtain a building permit as of right. For the reasons discussed above, is my opinion, one which the applicant has been aware of since last fall, that the building permit may not issue without a finding from the board that the proposed reconstruction does not constitute an extension of a pre-existing, nonconforming use. Accordingly, the board should uphold the determination of the building commissioner that the applicant does not have the present right to a building permit. If you have any questions regarding this correspondence, please feel free to contact me. Paul J. Haverty, Esquire.
Did we get an updated one, with an update after the new plan?
I don't believe we did, I think this was the only opinion. I have, I've been in email contact with him, and his opinion was at the last meeting that they had complied with the area and percentage of use.
Which would have.
With the removal of the existing house. So they, they scaled it down and got within, yeah. I, I think this would be a different letter if he wrote it today, because of the reduction. Mr. Haverty is away, we can ask him for clarification. I would point out that we've been over, or at a hundred days, so we would need to ask for an extension of the.
This isn't a hundred day, is it?
Yes, it's. It hasn't been a hundred days yet, but it will be if we go to December second. On another note, I am not available for the meeting tomorrow night. If you get bogged down in the frontage question, I suggest continuing your December, to your December meeting, so I can be present. If you do continue, make sure to get an extension from the applicant of the hundred-day period the board is required to make its decision. By December second, lady?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Have we discussed the frontage question that he just referred to today?
I, I think the frontage question is second lane. Is second lane frontage? I think the argument is strong that the planning board considers a way a, a suitable frontage. What is a way is, to me, is, it's not a road. But the fire department has also signed a letter saying that they are comfortable with the use of the road, and I think that is the standard for the town. For any driveway, roadway, they have to be able to meet the requirement of the fire department, hold up an eighty-thousand-pound truck.
And the turnaround, right?
But I haven't heard that they don't have access to second lane beyond that property. I have no idea.
We, we did drive-through, and there is access. Whether it's legal or not, I don't know, but we, we left in that circumstance. I will read this in, it's from Dan, Danielle Kostopoulos. Dear Mr. Larkin, this email is regards to the planned construction of three homes on Second Lane in Chelmsford. The site plan that was brought to the Fire Prevention Office was acceptable to this department for fire apparatus access. Second Lane currently exists with outlets at both Parkerville Road and Fourth Lane ends. The plan as shown allows apparatus access to all proposed development on this street. Respectfully, Danielle Kostopoulos. Captain Chelmsford Fire Department. So he's considering the road suitable for fire apparatus. Our concern is the road creates frontage, or that's the, the new concern. I know Philip was unaware of it, but the more you pay attention to it, you want to try to understand what exactly we're, we've got going here. So I think the board has to decide whether Second Lane is suitable as frontage. It, it does not apply to the building inspector's denial letter, but to, you know, I mean, we can vote to uphold or disagree with the denial letter the building inspector, the building commissioner presented, and not go into the frontage question.
I know, what, I don't really, I don't think that I understand what the frontage is. Are we deliberating now? Is this a good time? I don't think that I understand the, the impact that the frontage question has on our.
To, to be considered a lot, to be a lot, it has to have frontage.
But if we feel like it's not frontage?
Then it's not a lot.
So that, that does what to our decision?
Because it makes it not.
It's not a buildable lot.
Frontage is zero.
Then it's not a buildable lot at all.
It's non-buildable.
So then, nobody can get a permit and nothing can ever be done. Or this is, I mean, I just.
It's, it's a difficult.
The last lot was all one, and their frontage was on Parker.
Yes, yeah, and that's since they split it off, yeah.
Right, but that's split off now, so that's gone.
Yeah.
Is that originally split off?
So it doesn't seem like there's really any option other than to call.
Did you split that? Did you split that?
No, that was a separate, separate parcel.
When you bought it, it was already separated.
Correct.
Yeah.
So you bought a lot without frontage, except on Second Lane.
Yeah, but similar to any other lot that's on Fourth Lane, Second Lane, they all don't have frontage on any street.
But when you buy them and they go into mutual ownership, they merge if one is less.
The building inspector ruled on that, that it was, that that didn't happen.
Which one?
I mean, I don't, yeah.
Can we look at the lot next to, or next door to him? Was the frontage, the frontage on that lot next door to him?
Your lot's next door to Second Lane, that have houses on it that have no frontage, that tore down, that cottages and rebuilt.
What are they using for frontage on the lot next to us?
Parker. But it's a, it's an undersized lot, it also was a pre-existing, nonconforming, undersized lot.
So people that have gotten permits on Second Lane before in the past, there's been building, so they must have had permits in the past. Second Lane was considered frontage for them, right?
I have a file, this thick for thirty-two that.
Yeah, and Second Lane was considered frontage, in which case I feel like we have to consider Second Lane frontage, right? We don't really have much of, I mean.
It's a ten-foot-wide easement. I mean, I don't know, that, that might be a good.
But if it's been considered frontage in the past for, for past building permits.
That's what I'm asking, can we, can we look up the next-door neighbor?
Uh, I have people.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Bob LaPorte, you want to hear from him?
Um, so, we, we'll open this up. I was requested to have Pam Revard speak first. I think she's sort of a, a little bit in charge, she is a director butter, and then Mr. LaPorte.
I'll be very quick.
Give me a name and address for the record, please.
Pam Revard, First Lane, South Chelmsford. I had no intentions of speaking tonight. I feel like I've spoken so much, and you all know where I stand in protection of our neighborhood. We think this is very bad for our neighborhood to have a condo association, multifamily, and a residential, single-family area. But I wasn't going to speak again about it, because I thought I'd be redundant. But I found that I could not allow Mr. Larkin's attorney, Mr. McManus, who is, I'm very sorry, he's not here today, I would have liked to address him near what I have to say. The last meeting, I cannot let him have the last word on the concept of sentimentality. If you recall, after I spoke at the last meeting, and I presented a lot of facts and figures and everything, but the, the last meeting, I talked about what the neighborhood means to me, and that it's, it's hard to swallow when people come in and say, "This is good for your neighborhood," when they don't live here. Maybe they live in Boston, maybe they live somewhere else, but they, they haven't lived in our neighborhood. And if this is so good for our neighborhood, why are all these people here? But anyway, I spoke about that, and, and when I finished speaking, Mr. McManus stood up and said, "Let's get away from sentimentality and return to facts." Those words were meant to demean, belittle, and dismiss, dismiss my concerns, if not me as a person. They were meant to establish that sentiment had no place in the decisions we make about our development of our town, in our neighborhood, or in the area directly abutting our own. I respectfully disagree. It is sentiment, the feelings of tenderness and nostalgia, that drive us as a town to preserve a historic building or to restore an old town hall. We have human feelings of tenderness and nostalgia when we put on a Fourth of July parade or hold a ceremony to take down a purple beech tree on our town green that was planted by my grandfather's Chelmsford High School graduating class of eighteen ninety-two. It is sentiment that makes us value our communities and our quality of life in those communities. We have a historical society and a historic mission for the sole purpose of preservation of that which we hold dear about our past and present. Our town motto is, "Let the children guard what the sires have won." Our laws and our building codes are meant to protect that which is most precious about our people and our communities. They should be interpreted as such with every benefit of a doubt, going in favor of those in the fight because of sentiment. The tender and nostalgic valuing of their quality of life and not to those fighting for a greater profit. That is my statement on sentiment, and we'll now get on back to the facts. Bob LaPorte was going to speak on Zoom, is he available to speak?
Bob, are you there? You're muted.
And he's not showing up anywhere.
I think he is, right. When he speaks.
There you go.
I reserve the right to make more comments.
Can I, can, can I, I'm sorry, Mr. Bob, Mr. LaPorte, before you start, can I just, I want two, two questions. You say that, just so I could under, better understand, that having two or multiple. that having two or multiple family homes on one lot, I'm sorry, could you just rephrase what your statement was about that, your position on that?
My position on that is, what we have now are, were small cottages, never meant to be year-round homes. At the most, we had five people living in those four houses. This is a quiet, soft, soft-imprinted area.
Okay, but it was, it was your family that had previous, was it your, was it your family that previously?
Sins of my ancestors have come to.
But they were, they were renting it all year round?
Yeah, they were always in it from eighteen fifty-two.
Okay.
They owned the land, and those cottages were built for family summer places. There was one principal structure for the parents.
And then, yeah, I'm, I'm, I understand how that started.
That's how it's.
But at the end, was it not?
At the end, as a family.
Was it not be, all those, all those houses, all those buildings were being used year-round?
They were, often on.
But, but.
People would move in.
Move in, but at the end, they were being used year-round.
That is correct. That is correct.
So at the end, before they were sold, the lot was sold, there was multiple family homes on that property?
Yes.
Okay, and then you said it would be, I think, did you say it would be detrimental to the neighborhood to have?
We feel there is, that it would be detrimental in terms of increase of noise level, activity, the, the, this is pristine, this was pristine land. This has never been dug up. This has never been excavated. And the percentage of, I know you have your, your, your charts and everything for that thing, which I will question, because there's errors in those charts, mathematical errors. But to have all that land dug, dug up, and these big, much bigger houses, much bigger increase in space, with the lawns and the landscaping and all of that, first of all, that, all that fussiness doesn't fit into our, the character of our neighborhood. Plus, it disrupts it. They're going to have to bring in topsoil. We're right on a very, we're very biologically vulnerable with the pond right there, and that lot is flat up top, and then, then goes down like that. So we just feel like it is a massive change in the, the activity level that's going to be there.
Okay.
And the character of the buildings, and the especially, especially the condo association organization. We don't have anything like that on the pond.
The, the idea of the association itself, okay. Seventh Lane, is that, that lot on Seventh Lane, is that two family homes on one lot?
Yes, that's two separately-owned family homes. So you have one conforming lot of an acre.
Yep.
And then there was a variance given to them for a half acre for a second family home.
Okay, but that's, you still consider that part of your Hart Pond area, okay? Right, right, okay, okay.
Yeah, and they're doing a good job. They've lift up a lot of trees, and the homes are beautiful. We, I don't think any of us object to a big, beautiful home being built on there. We'd welcome that. But the number of homes and the activity level and the disruption to the ecology there, it's a problem. It doesn't fit in with our neighborhood. I don't know how else to say it. And just by looking at it, you say, oh, it seems pretty roomy, but it's still, it's a narrow, long lot. So it might seem bigger. It's one point four or five acres. That's one building lot.
I mean, we walked, I mean, we walked it.
And a lot of what you see, see, walking around there might be my property. Or it might be my neighbor's property. It's one point four or five acres, no matter how much it, how it looks to you.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Laporte.
They're ready for you, Bob.
Okay, that's Bob Laporte, thirty-eight Parkerville Road. And I'm just going to briefly go over the letter that I sent to the board on November first. But before that, I think I want to get some clarification on the site plan and frontage. I issue, I think I've addressed that previously. And one of the issues I have is that the submitted site plan does not really define the access that this one point four or five acres has with regards to that ten-foot strip of land. The location of Second Lane and the location of any easements that may exist. You know, it may come to be that Second Lane may or may not be on this ten-foot wide right-of-way, though I believe portions of it might be. But whether or not the physical layout of Second Lane as we know it may not abut this one point four or five acre lot. And I think the, the site plan that they've submitted is deficient with regards to defining the location of what is called Second Lane, and where the ten-foot wide right-of-way that goes from Parkerville Road down to Hart Pond, where that's located. So that there's some clarity, the fight upon would have better clarity on their access. And this issue that we have on frontage can be clearly resolved one way or the other. But the legal description that's in this deed does not show any access of frontage as defined as Second Lane on the legal description. It just says that the, the access to Parkerville Road is on a ten-foot wide right-of-way. So, you know, I just wanted to start out and kind of clarify that issue on, on frontage. The other issues I have, and I'm going to probably go over the definition of what I think structures are, what one- or two-family properties are, what their definition is. And so with regard to when they say a one- or two-family residence, that means that there's a structure on that property that's occupied by one family, or if it's a two-family, there'd be two-family units. But just one structure on a lot. So what we have here is a definition, and even in the submission by the applicant, they refer to those as single-family structures. But in the common vernacular of real estate, whether it's from the legal standpoint or through commonly accepted definitions of real estate, a single-family residence would be one structure on a single lot. And looking further at definitions, and I refer to the Board of Appeals' definition of a principal building and an accessory building. And if I can just take a minute to read those definitions. A principal building is a building of which is conducted the main or principal use of the lot on which said building is situated. An accessory building is a subordinate building located on the same lot as the main or principal building or principal use, the use of which is customarily incidental to that of the principal building or use of the land. So in my mind, what we have here in the existing conditions is one principal building and two accessory buildings. But I will note that there's a third accessory building that encroaches on Pam Revard's property. And I would not call that a legal building or a legal structure because of the encroachment. And while they can go and make a claim of adverse possession, you know, it's really speculative and hypothetical that they would ever get a court to agree that it's a legal structure on through adverse possession, that they have legal use of that. So I think, in this case, what we, what I'm wrapping my head around is we have a principal building and two accessory buildings. And those structures are going to be converted into three principal buildings. Also, within the town, there is a section of definitions that define single and two-family and multifamily. And it's my understanding, if there are three units, dwelling units on a lot, then the characterization of that changes to multifamily. And whether or not, now that this issue that you have before the board, because it can be classified as multifamily, is something that the Board of Appeals, you know, needs to address. I'm not clear on that. So with regard to the three proposed principal structures, there is an issue of significant change where they are now going to be a condominium form of ownership. And I think that constitutes a significant change from the existing, and I don't want to use the word "use," but occupancy of the buildings. And in my opinion, that condition significantly increases the property's nonconformity. And also, I would add that a condominium ownership is not consistent with land uses, and I don't think is consistent with the intent of one ninety-five A.D. So in summary, I guess, I also want to add that I have a chart in a letter that I've addressed to the Board of Appeals that goes over the significant increase in the development size of what exists today to what is being proposed. So according to the assessors, and I actually would also add that one of these buildings was constructed as late as nineteen fifty. So they weren't all constructed during the nineteen thirties. But the existing building area on that property today is three thousand six hundred and fifty-one square feet. And the development proposes an increase of that to ten thousand nine hundred and fifty-three square feet, which is a, you know, a significant increase in the mass of that development. In addition, the houses today down there are one and one-and-a-half story structures, and they're going to increase to two and a half, to to three-story structures. And I think that's a significant change in the character and use of the property. So my, my letter has stated some other issues, but I think those are the principal ones that I have. And I think the, the issue of the principal structure and accessory structures, and that change to three principal structures is very relevant to the, to support the building commissioner's denial of a building permit. And that's what I have to say.
Thank you. I'm going to ask Philip, would you like to respond to Mr. Laporte in any fashion? I don't know if you do or don't.
Well, I think certainly there's nothing in the bylaw that would prevent the applicant from creating a condo association here. If we never came before the board, maintained the four existing structures, we could condominiumize it tomorrow. So we have the right under mass law, under Chapter one eighty-five, eighty-three A, to create a condominium there. But that aside, I mean, I think you could argue, and again, I'm not here to tell anyone how they should feel. That's not how I, how I, it's not who I am. I think that right now, you've, you've heard the transient nature of these properties, rentals, people coming in and out. You know, those aren't necessarily the people that are going to care for a property. They've got no skin in the game. They're renting for two thousand a month. The applicant could tear down these structures, rebuild them in roughly the same size in different locations, create a condominium, and sell four units over there, and we wouldn't even be before this board. But I would say, you know, having ownership, having skin in the game of those three new structures, to me, would be a much better improvement than just having four rental properties with people coming in and out, thirty-day tenants, tenant-wills. I just don't see how the condominium would be worse than rentals. That's just my opinion, but it is legally allowed. It's, there is no.
By right.
It's by right.
Thank you. Would anyone else like to speak in favor or opposition to this application? I, I think we should talk about a time.
Everybody, three minutes.
Everybody, three minutes?
Yeah, three minutes.
I'm going to ask you to limit your, your response to three minutes, if that's okay?
Couldn't do that. I, I just wanted to offer up a little bit from the zoning bylaws. One is from definitions of dwelling. It includes, a multifamily dwelling shall be one designed for and occupied by three or more families. Multifamily dwellings also include three or more family units in any configuration, whether or not attached on a single lot. So by that definition, what they're building is multifamily. And if I go back to site plan review, following types of activities and uses require site plan review by the planning board. Construction, exterior alteration, or exterior expansion of, or change of use within a multifamily structure involving more than five hundred square feet. So if you deem that this goes forward, because it's a multifamily dwelling in three buildings, it needs a full site plan review.
I'll ask Jose if he has a thought on that, just for clarity. Short notice, you want to review that maybe?
So in the building code, we'll tie it up to the topic here for a minute. So any any three family, whether they are attached or separate, are considered multifamily units.
Would this, let's say that if this was resolved in some fashion, would they go to the planning board at that point for a slight site plan review?
So it's a little complicated because the district is a residential district. So whatever happens here today will determine what's happened with the, because if they go, they will still be in a residential district, applying for a, three structures in the same lot, which is, in the building code, is a multifamily use. You could have a single-family home.
They didn't get planning board review?
They did.
Oh, they did, okay. So that would be a requirement, planning board review?
No, of course not.
One fifty-two Turpik did.
One fifty, well.
A hundred and nine units, if I'm.
Yeah, it wasn't a hundred and nine. That was a different.
Now that stirred the pot.
So.
You going to leave now?
Yeah.
She's going.
She wants more work for the planning board? The reconstruction of these, first of all, these four structures preexist the town's bylaws, which means they preexist the site plan review bylaw by the town of Chelmsford, which probably came out in the seventies or eighties. But again, going back to one ninety-five A.E., under that. But again, going back to 195 AD, under that section of the bylaw, these structures can be reconstructed. Doesn't require going before the planning board for site plan review. That section of the bylaw stands on its own. If these structures were in existence before these date, and they meet these setbacks, and they meet only the current FAR and lot area ratio, they can be reconstructed by right. So there's no requirement to go before Planning Board for Site Plan Review. Now, the issue of whether the use has been an alteration, a substantial alteration of the use, again, you can make that argument. We would say it isn't. But then again, if you meet that first test, then you've got to go to the second test, is then, if there is a substantial increase of the use, is it also substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood? Now, I understand that the neighborhood feels it is, but it's up to this board to determine, based on its sidewalk, based on the traffic study, based on the going from four to three structures, based on two additional bedrooms, based on the fact that some of the butters don't even live on Second Lane, so they're not going to see traffic, because it's not like traffic's going to be increased on First Lane. Would there be a substantial or detrimental increase in the use? So, again, I don't want to keep rehashing the same thing before the board.
We're not starting the circle.
But definitely no site plan would be required. It's, 195 AD is black and white. I mean, and I think Town Council's already sort of put that to bed.
Is that really a consideration for us anyways? Should we even take that into consideration, whether a site, I mean...
Not really.
I mean, the definition is a multifamily.
What we are truly hearing inside is whether we're going to overturn or...
Yeah.
...in favor of the building inspector's denial letter. That's our task.
And that clearly didn't indicate...
Broad as this has become, that is our task.
Yeah.
And that didn't indicate that we needed site plan review by the planning board.
And if it did or didn't, I mean, that's really not a decision we need to worry.
Yeah.
We need to decide whether we are going to uphold or...
Just making sure.
...overturn the inspector's denial letter.
Could you, and this point with the council's letter, when it said whether the present use reflects nature and use prevailing at time of zoning law took effect. So I'm assuming the zoning law took effect in the '70s?
38.
Oh, the zoning law took effect in 38?
That's why they're claiming, two of the structures were before 1938.
Okay.
And two were 1940 and 1950.
Okay. So at the time, so, okay, so the pre, so the two before 38 are not grandfathered, so they don't apply to zoning, and then the other two do apply to zoning?
At the time, right.
Right. Okay. So I guess the whole multi...
And the setbacks are taken from those times.
Yeah. But I'm saying, like, as far as zoning and as far as use, like, substantial, because it talks about degree of, so I'm assuming in the '30s and '40s, at the time of these buildings, they were cottages. It was one primary, and then two seasonal, three seasonals. So if it's prevailing at the time of zoning...
I went through them, and I felt that you could have lived in any one of those year-round. I physically went through them. There was heat, there was water, there was electricity, there was sewer.
I thought you'd want to, but you could have.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think it's important you understand that you could, maybe do you want, I mean, they are in tough shape, there's no doubt, but they did offer the amenities needed to have year-round housing. Heat, electricity, water, and sewer, I mean, that's...
Who brought in the frontage issue, and what is that? You read it in tonight, so where did that come from, with the frontage? Whether or not the lot has frontage on Second Lane?
It was in discussions, actually.
It's not a road, I know, but you brought it up, and I just want to clarify where it came from?
I'm not sure where it came from.
I think I asked about it, because it was in the letter that you were reading from the attorney.
But before that, you had mentioned it before you read the letter. I think it was something, right? I thought, maybe not.
I'm not sure where it specifically came from. I mean, it...
Been lingering.
Yeah, it's sort of been in the peripheral for quite a while that I know of, but it really, you know, we really need to keep focused on, our task is to decide if we agree or disagree with a determination of the building inspector. A lot of this is very important to everyone, and I respect that, but we do have a task here that's limited in its scope.
Right.
And that is whether or not we feel that the building inspector was correct in his determination or incorrect, and we would overturn that decision with the vote. That is our only task. If they need to go to Planning Board, it's really immaterial.
Right.
If they don't, it's immaterial. We just need to decide whether we feel the building inspector, his interpretation of the zoning and building code was correct.
Okay.
That's what we need to focus on. And I know it's getting very...
Just know, but when you brought a frontage thing, and that does change your thinking on, is it...
After the separation? So we don't need that to...
Well, that lot's not going to go backwards. That lot is inseparated, that's a done.
I was going to say, but the separation would have, had in fact turned into a non-able law, so maybe him changing his, the dial. Okay, yeah, got it.
Does anyone else would like to speak in favor or opposition?
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Dennis McHugh. I'm here as a neighbor of 14 Northview.
Thank you, sir.
Speaking in opposition to the application, that it does create a substantial extension of the use of the premises. We all know attorneys can disagree on the law, but the construction of four substantially larger properties intended for year-round use as opposed to primary residence intended for seasonal use is a change. I agree with Town Council that the powers' decision does outline the three-point test. If the new use is not in the nature or purpose of the old use, which is what we've been talking about in comparing the two types of buildings that are there, there's a difference in quality and character or degree, and that too has been part of our discussion, and the new use is different in kind and its effect on the neighborhood, and that too has been part of the discussion. And Town Council says, that's part of your job to determine those three things, when you're considering this application. Certainly, the summer structures versus year-round, I know they're designed for summer, and they have been used occasionally, or even most recently, year-round, but the nature and purpose is very different. Quality, character, and degree, no question, that's very, very different. And when you're talking about measuring whether something is different or not, those are the types of words that you're supposed to use to apply to make the decision. The use is different. For full-year residence versus summer residence gets back to the thing about whether it's rented or not. The court has decided, said significantly large, permanent uses, uses represents increased traffic, activity, noise, which has all been mentioned tonight, significant increase in impervious area with increased footprint and pavement that's going to result. Berliner v. Feldman, which decided in the materials, is a change from property design for summer use to year-round use is a substantial extension. Martin v. Board of Appeals of Yarmouth stands for the proposition that a voluntarily destroyed nonconforming structure may not be rebuilt as a non-complying structure, even if the proposed reconstruction will not increase the noncompliance. And just finally, briefly, going back to the Seventh Lane proposal, that too was a complicated proposal, and was reduced to a two-lot subdivision, and that it's important for the public to know that the board applies its decisions consistently, with some respect for precedence and order, and that, you know, going down this road is an extension that is not allowed by the bylaw. Thank you.
Thank you.
Benton Burgess, 52nd Lane. Thank you, as always, for listening to us, we appreciate it. I've always viewed Chelmsford as a one-house, one-lot, one-house kind of town, is how I've always viewed it. Makes it easy for someone like myself to understand. It's very straightforward. And, you know, when something like this proposal comes along, it's a, that's a challenge, you know? When something like this comes along and lands in your neighborhood, it's unnerving. There's clear-cut trees, mounds of dirt all over the place, rumors of what's going to happen in your neighborhood. It's scary. You know, you think to yourself, what should I do? Should I hire a lawyer? Should I move? You know, you come up to these things, and then you realize that the town of Chelmsford has this board. It has Town Council. It has a building commissioner. They're there to look out for us, and we appreciate that. We rely on you to protect us and the town from any kind of harm or something that would alter our community. We appreciate you guys being here. It's important to us. Along that vein, I would like to commend our building commissioner, Mr. Negron, for denying this original plan. Mr. Negron stood up for us, and I greatly appreciate that. Gave us a chance to talk about this. You know, we had, you would listen to, a while ago, you listened to Richard Byham and Pam Revard talk about how they built a house. They knew that Chelmsford was a one-lot, one-house kind of town. They came down to Town Hall, looked at the rules, and found out that these are the rules. They changed their building plans to meet those rules, and Chelmsford is better for it. Tonight, this proposal does the exact opposite. This proposal asks us to warp the rules to meet the building plans. I don't think that's how it's supposed to work. So, you know, I, okay, I do want to let you guys know, I'm here for a different reason. Really? I, you know, you always hear us come up in front of you and talk about the problems, right? Tonight, I'd like to talk about something different. I'd like to let you know what I would support. You know, if this were a two-house proposal, I would support my neighbor, Patrick Larkin. If there is some way, some scenario, and there's got to be some scenario that works for Mr. Larkin, where two houses work, I would fully support Patrick in his request. And not only that, I bet you the vast majority of all of our neighbors, if not all of them, would also support such a request, whatever that takes. And I think that would be a solution to this problem. Thank you.
Thank you.
Jeff Nolan, 43 Parkerville Road. So my property is the one that is directly across the street from where Second Lane exits onto Parkerville. So I can't talk to the character of the neighborhood of the Hart Pond side, right? I don't, I'm sort of the edge of where the Hart Pond neighborhood would probably end, so I'll let them speak to how those proposed houses fit in with the character of that side of the street. I just did want to raise some concerns about the proximity of this, you know, cluster of houses to Parkerville. Parkerville is a dark, narrow, cut-through street. It has no shoulder. It is frequently, it is a 30 mile an hour road where you frequently get 40 and 50 mile an hour cars going from 27 to 110 in Westford. So any additional cars that might need street parking, impact on snow removal, I'm already frequently the recipient of Second Lane's snow in the winter, when they push it, push it out of the neighborhood. So I'm just concerned about the added, the danger of added activity to that intersection, right? If these houses have guests and they need street parking, Second Lane becomes near impassable if you have to have somebody park on the side of the road there. There's no room for cars to park on the shoulder in Parkerville unless they go all the way down to the cemetery. So, again, just in terms of detrimental to the overall neighborhood, I am very concerned about the spill-out of any activity from that, you know, cluster of houses close to that intersection on top of the house that's already being built there right now. So...
Thank you.
So, most of these people, all these people are members of the Hart Pond Association, which is a, excuse me, 501(c)(3) nonprofit corporation. Since 2005, all of these neighbors have spent about $463,000 on maintaining that pond, not only for the residents, but for the people of Chelmsford and surrounding towns, they all use the beach. We have this constant weed problem. It's called fanwort, invasive species that go into this pond. Now, we've taken the hydroscopic properties of this, and we're going to make it impervious. It used to be forested land, now it's clear-cut, so the properties of, you know, rainwater, heavy rainstorms, it's going to run off into the pond. Now, we're going to put lawns in with fertilizer, phosphates. They contribute to this immense weed growth of the fanwort. And it's a continual problem, so I think it's detrimental to the neighborhood to have, you know, what's once forested land, now we've got this impervious land with, yeah, we've got landscaping, but yeah, we're going to fertilize the heck out of it. It's going to run off right into the pond. It's going to cost the residents more. Everyone here, if they're on the waterfront, is members of this association, and, you know, if a condo association is developed here, I assume the members of the condo association would have water rights, access to the water, to build a dock, to bring in boats, which also carry fanwort on them and other invasive species. So we've got that to deal with. I believe the new property on that fronts Parkerville Road does not have access to any water rights at all, is my understanding. But these new homes, with all of this access, bringing additional guests, it's going to impact the ecology of the pond. And that's why we formed Hart Pond Association, so we could clean that up, make it available for all of the residents of Chelmsford, Westford, neighboring towns. It's a great, you've probably been there, it's a great place to be.
Great one.
And it's pristine. And the consequences of doing a project like this do impact and are detrimental to the neighborhood, to all of these neighbors who live on Hart Pond, as well as everybody else in Chelmsford. The fanwort is a real problem, and we've, you know, almost half a million dollars on just a few people in here to maintain that pond. So that's my view. It is a detrimental development with that many homes, maybe two, but I don't know. I think that everyone here is concerned about that as well, and everybody should be about the ecological impacts of a development like this. That's all I have.
Thank you.
Just like to rebut that, Patrick Larkin?
We've gone in front of the Conservation Board. At the hearing, we were given granted permission from the Conservation Board to build a house on the pond. The issue of fertilizer going into the property, into the pond, was addressed, and there won't be any fertilizer, it was written into the decision. If the gentleman was at the conservation meetings, he would have realized that that was written into the order of conditions. In regards to other people having access to the pond, which he said people would have, I don't know where he got that information from. That is an incorrect, false statement.
Thank you.
We were at that Conservation Commission, and they asked for a written proposal, which Mr. Larkin did not...
You're going to need to approach the podium, sir.
I made my point, thank you.
I'm going to make. Is there anyone else who would like to speak regarding this application?
Hi, good evening.
Jen Adelman. We are, I'm the owner of 6 Second Lane, the corner right on Parkerville and Second Lane. I currently reside at 198 Littleton Road in Chelmsford. I don't understand what, why everyone has such a problem with it when they all pretty much said they did the same thing. Ms. Lawler stated in the last meeting that she bought two cottages, knocked them down well, and as far as Mr. Laporte, you all walked it. You had to go all the way down to the dock to actually see where Ms. Revard's home is. You can't see Mr. Laporte's. We are the direct butters, and then Ms. Lawler. And she did the same, she stated here at this podium that she did the same exact thing that Mr. Larkin is trying to do. I don't understand why he's being penalized just because he's the last one to do it. If it was okay for them, why is it not okay for them, for him? I do understand that this land meant a lot to Ms. Revard, and I'm sure there was wonderful memories with her family there. But again, that piece of land was for sale with the MLS. She could have purchased it, purchased it, if it meant that much to her and her family. So it is time to put the sentimentality apart. They've mentioned the dirt, the mess. That will be gone once the construction, like, right now, our lot is full of wood and mess. I don't want it to look like that. I don't want to live next to that. That will be cleared, and there will be grass and trees and landscaping. It will be beautiful. You all saw it. It is not beautiful right now. So I just wanted to come up and say that I am in... So I just wanted to come up and say that I am in, I'm the director butter to the whole project, and I am in favor of what Mr. Larkin has planned. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, Suzanne Lawler, thirty-two and thirty-four Second Lane. I just wanted to comment on that, along with what Benton was saying, one lot, one house. I have two separate lots, one house on each lot. That's it.
Thank you.
Thanks. My name's Dan Bowdre. I'm in twenty-six Fourth Lane. My quick comment is that, to me, it's very clear that it's a change in degree in all of this. And we've said that word a lot in the meetings that I've been to here. But what's being proposed versus what's been there is a huge change in degree. We just focus on that. To me, it's, it's pretty clear. And one of the documents that cites that change in degree would be an exception to this. So just want to bring that to everybody's attention. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any further questions or comments from the audience?
Pam Revard, first lane, still, still living there. First of all, I wanted to thank Mr. Negron too for looking out for us. And I also wanted to piggyback on Benton Burgess's, um, suggestion of a good, a good compromise here for all of us. And I, I personally, as a direct butter, the main a butter, would, would do everything I can to support. I realize you could have one conforming lot, one non-conforming lot, and I would do everything I can to support, uh, Mr. Larkin getting a variance for that second lot, so that he could build, build there. So I wanted to say that, but I also wanted to avoid a little bit of concern that should you decide to overrule Mr. Negron as the building commissioner and approve three, is there any guarantee that it will be three? Because we have, we're being sued in, in land court for four. So is there any understanding or agreement that if the three goes through, that will be it? And so, that, that's very iffy to me, so.
I think that if the land court overturns our decision, it overturns it.
Yeah, and if the same.
In that case, so that, well, that, I, we can't, I don't even know what to tell you. That could happen.
This should be mute.
That's right, because Mr. Negron used the same argument to turn down four as to turn down three. So if you overturn him, it seems, I would love to think that they would say, yes, if you approve of three, we won't go any further. We'll stick with three. But I haven't heard that assurance. So I'm, I'm hoping that you look at the, or Mr. Larkin, um, looks at the possibility of two. Two beautiful homes, um, and hopefully that that would work out financially for him in this endeavor. Thank you.
Philip, is there any?
Just to address, I guess, oh, two points, I think, for what it's worth. And, Mr. Larkin, correct me if I'm wrong, if the three properties are created and the condominium is created, I imagine you'll have exclusive use of the pond. So he would, his structure that's been approved by the Concom, that would have the only direct access to the pond. And again, the Concom decision looked at fertilizers and wrote into their decision those protections, and, you know, I think found that what's there today, this will be better in terms of, you know, providing proper drainage and avoiding runoff and things of that nature. With regards to, um, the existing litigation, there is a land court case right now where, you know, they're, they're, they are seeking the four structures. If the town grants a building permit for three and we build three structures, we would withdraw that. That's, that's, the way we've reconfigured the plan, you, we've done it in a way that would prevent us from putting a four structure now on that, on that site. So, um, the project before the town would result in a withdrawal of that suitcase. So there would not be four. And the building permit, that if this board instructed the, overturned the building inspector's, uh, decision, the building inspector could only grant a three permit, three building permit, because that's what was applied for by the applicant. So that's the most that could be built there. And that's all that we're seeking to have built there. But this would resolve the litigation for sure.
Thank you.
That's it.
I think we'd like to see if the board would vote in that. If there's any new information, we'd give the ride.
I agree. We've gone through quite a bit. Is there anyone else who'd like to comment regarding this application?
Thank you, folks. I'll be very brief. My name's Robert Hague. I'm here with my wife, Mary Ellen. We are at twenty-fourth Lane on Hart Pond. I'm glad that Attorney Eliopoulos just brought up one of the points he just did. In a condo association, it's our understanding that all of the participants of a condo association must abide by the same rules. I don't believe that one principal owner can have beach rights without allowing the other two in a condo association to have those same rights. That's one of the concerns that we have about beach access and how the other tenants would have access across his land to the beach for their boats and beach rights and such. I'm not sure about that, but these are some of the questions that we've had altogether. We too would like to thank the board for their consideration. We'd been here a number of times. And just for a visual, if I may, those who might be in favor of two homes as opposed to three or four, maybe a show of hands to kind of show how we would support that endeavor? Thank you.
My name is Michael Larkin. I'm a real estate attorney as well. And it's very common for condominium or to put an exclusive use area that no other unit would be allowed to use that area. That's a very common thing to do. So when the documents be created, it'll be created on a plan, and the plan will show specifically the use areas of the three properties. So what you would see is, unit one would have this area, unit two would be the area around that, and unit three would be specifically excluding the other two uses, the other two properties from that, um, beach right, beach access or anything. So that'd be put in the, in the master deed.
Thank you. Are there any further comments or concerns or questions? I want to entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
I'll make a motion. I'll make a motion to close the public hearing.
I'd like to get that motion.
Take away Peter. All in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous. So the meeting is closed. I think that we should look at. All, all the other information is valuable, and it is, it's gonna come down to our decision is just whether we're supporting the letter or we're not. If you have it, you should read it. Does everybody have a copy?
Yep.
Is that letter online, Brian?
Yeah, where's the one that he wrote for three?
It is the twenty-ninth of July.
It's on the agenda, Stephen.
Okay, thank you.
It's still, I think, the last page, or close to it, right?
One of the links.
Should be on the agenda.
Yep.
Is it, is there two? Because mine says twenty-seven. Dated twenty-nine? Mine's dated the twenty-seventh. If yours dated the twenty-seventh, then Aaron.
Mine's dated the...
Twenty-seventh.
Yeah, twenty-ninth. We're looking for the one dated the twenty-ninth.
Have your, your twenty-ninth letter? That's the one we need to see.
Yeah. The thing online is the twenty-seventh.
Yeah.
Philip, are you in possession of that letter perhaps?
Yeah, do you want?
If you wouldn't mind, we can't apparently find it online or in our file here. I think I will read this into the record specifically. Hart Pond Development LLC, nine Manning Road, Chelmsford, Mass. From Jose W. Negron, building commissioner, date July twenty-ninth, two thousand and twenty-one. Reason, twenty-four, twenty-six, twenty-eight, thirty, Second Lane, for single-family, single-lot denial. The correct number at this point would be three, and it's a typo at four, as I'm told. I'm gonna read it in as a three. I want you to read his letter. Mr. Larkin, as the commissioner in charge of the interpretation of the Town and Chelmsford bylaws, I am responding and denying to your request to rebuilding three separate family dwellings as part of the same lot under one ninety-five eight, non-conforming uses and structures. By right, non-conforming, single and two-family residential structure, as per my interpretation of this section, where clearly states, "Non-conforming, single and two-family residential structures may be reconstructed, extended, altered, or structurally changed. The work upon determination by the inspector buildings that such proposed reconstruction, extension, alteration, or change does not increase the non-conforming use of such structure. It is my determination that said houses will be demolished and reconstructed, increasing the non-conforming use nature of such structures prior to demolition by creating new structures with different characteristics of those prior to the non-conforming use, to the past existing nature, placing multiple structures in residential district, which as per one ninety-five twelve, multiple principal structures are not allowed. As per one ninety-five one oh two, Board of Appeals of the Town and Chelmsford Ordinance, you have the right to appeal my decision, under my interpretation, within thirty days of receiving this letter." So specifically, his denial is one ninety-five twelve, which states, "Multiple principal structures are not allowed on a single lot." The argument is, are they grandfathered in? And that is what we need to decide.
And then increasing, yeah, increasing the non-conforming use. With the different characteristics of those prior to the non-conforming use.
I'm sorry, my book says the non-conforming nature. It is the non-conforming nature, right?
Okay, non-conforming use nature. So he has both words.
Okay, yeah, that's what the book says, just a, this is different. Nature is the word, yeah.
Yeah, so this is, this is the letter of the twenty-ninth.
Okay. It increases the non-conforming nature of the structures.
I literally don't know what to do.
Those people want to discuss that? So, can we discuss?
Oh, absolutely.
Okay, so I don't, I don't know about the rest of my fellow board members, but here is where I am stuck, based on this in Mr. Harvey's letter. Three or four, um, disregarding the fact, okay, so I understand that initially they were not in compliance with the measurements, right? RFA or FAR or whatever acronym, F A, yeah, so.
They are in compliance with that now.
They are now with three.
Their setbacks are in compliance. So dimensionally, they are correct, and they are in compliance with the...
So that would be negated in portion of this, Mr. Harvey's letter. I think I'm still, um, struggling with the present use reflecting nature with prevailing under zoning law took effect. Even in thirties, forties, or seventies, um, it's my, it's my interpretation that the prevailing use was seasonal, not year-round.
So the zoning bylaw says non-conforming nature, though, of said structure. It doesn't say use, right? It says non-conforming nature.
Rather than non-conforming use nature?
One ninety-five eight E says, "The alteration or change does not increase non-conforming nature of said structure." I have to write book, right? Somebody please.
Yeah, but the word use is in his denial letter.
Incorrectly. Well, I think, yeah, I think we had discussion in our past months about whether use is part of the nature and all of that, but we seem to be leaning towards use. We're really like, nature is the word that is in the...
Okay, I think I was just going on what, what our town council's guidance was and how we, how we should guide our decision-making and based on how we should reflect on our decision with regards to this letter and the council's guidance, I think is where, is where I'm kind of gearing, right? So, I don't know, like, to me, it just seems like whether the family previous to Mr. Larkin's purchase or ownership, did it legally or illegally turn it from seasonal to yearly? At the time of bylaws, it was cottages. They were seasonal. I mean, one could look at and say, they have heat, i.e. a fireplace, and they have plumbing and electric. I mean, I don't know if one would interpret that, that, that eight hundred square foot that had overgrowth would ever, any sane person would not anticipate or expect, um, to attract a family to live in that particular structure, in, in my opinion. So, you, those structures would not, as, as an owner renting, knowing that they're not going to attract that kind of population, that increase or that demographics, i- if you will. So they're going to attract the transient, the, the bachelors, the individuals, or maybe just the couple with no children, or those who want to live more or less off the grids, if you would, s- sort of say, um, in, in my opinion. Now, we're going to build, now we're going to build these beautiful, attractive, single-family homes that are going to attract families, right?
Well, I think that's speculation, though. You don't know. Like, a couple of childless family could move into one of those houses.
You're right, you could. It could. You're absolutely right.
But who they're gonna attract, I feel like is kind of speculation. I don't...
Okay, I just, that's where I, that's where I struggle, though. That's where I'm...
But they were both year-round. Is that kind of the point?
No, when, at the time of bylaws and stuff, they were used as seasonal.
Yeah, so is that, is it supposed to be?
Now, it's going to year-round. It's annual. So I think that's where the degree of use...
And we have to take it from the time the bylaws were created.
Whether the byums prior to sale were, whether the byums prior to, prior to sale were, turned it into annual legally or not, grandfathered or not, but at bylaws time, right?
It's the law reads it by law time, then, seasonal.
I mean, that's my interpretation, and every cottage on there was, I mean, I mean, even though, I don't, I, that's kind of where I'm struggling is the seasonal, right? We've got, i- in that regard. On the same regard, though, the, prior to, I mean, that's kind of where the degree of use. I mean, and yes, I mean, it is going to be a significant increase. You cannot deny, you're going from five thousand to ten thousand square feet on one lot. Yes, it might meet the dimensions, but you cannot deny that that is going to significantly impact. Whether it be detrimental, but it is going to significantly impact, and the population is going to increase. And I, you know, tra- traffic and so forth and so on. So you're right, it's, will it attract a single person, is it gonna buy a three-bedroom, two-bath house and only have one person?
Either way, the nature is different, I think, is here.
It is, I think. I think the nature and the degree. So that's kind of where I'm, I'm sitting and struggling at is, I mean, by law time, these were cottages. These were seasonal, right? Unless I'm misunderstanding something, and by reading this, it says, you know, "Nature of use at bylaws prevailing at time of bylaws took effect." Unless I'm misunderstanding Mr. Harvey's question.
I appreciate what you're saying. I, I think, well, I differ... I, I think, what I differ in thought is that I think whether it was seasonal or not, they were able to be year-round, and they were used as year-round. To say at the time of the bylaw, what were they? I don't know, but they have been used as single-family homes. To, to me, it becomes of, is this by right? I, I don't think the seasonal issue affects the use. It's, it's R one, single-family housing. If I chose to live in my house six months a year, wh- would the difference be? If I went to Florida for half of the year, does that make my house a cottage?
No, I, I mean, I agree.
I, I, I understand completely what you're saying, I just think...
But it's also rented, they were rentals, right, and not ownership?
I don't think that, I don't think rental opposed to ownership, really. I don't, I personally don't see there's a difference between rental and ownership, honestly, I don't. I think it's really...
You're living in a home.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I, I think structure and establish, like, structure and establishment, in my opinion, is more the sense like, eight hundred square foot, living in it as a cottage for three months, because you're on vacation, as opposed to living in eight hun, a family living in eight hundred square foot for a, the extended period of ti, your life, or however long you choose to plant your feet. That is where I see, you know, when I go on vacation and I rent a, a beach house, it, it may be tight, I may take my four children and only get a two-bedroom, and they're all sleeping on double bunks, because it's cost an arm and a leg, and I'm saving money, but...
But you're not gonna live there for twenty years, yeah.
Exactly, so that's where I kind of see the, that's where I see the difference in use, right? So kind of where I'm, where I see the substantial change in degree, or, I don't know if that makes sense.
No, I, I appreciate what you're saying. I think that's really the, the gist of it is, were they single-family homes? They will be now, I believe, and, and I realize they're bigger, but they've complied.
I mean, I understand the, the, and I, 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 that's where I'm torn, because under the by rights, if you look at, if there was no question about degree of character, or use, or nature, by right, we, I mean, we wouldn't be here, right? By law, by right, if there wasn't any question about nature, degree, then by right, we wouldn't be here. Because by the law, they have the right to build. So, again, it really comes down to by nature, by degree, in my opinion. So unless I'm seeing something, and, and again, I'm not a lawyer or...
Thank you for all the testimony that we all have, I, I can appreciate your opinion, absolutely.
I've got a question about the, the cottage label. Are these actually officially titled as cottages somewhere, or are we just calling them that?
You know, they are considered single-family homes, I believe, by the tax bill, because there's no other, there's no other, they're not considered accessory buildings by the tax bill.
Accessory use camp hereby, this was from, from Robert Laporte. I mean, he pulled, did he pull this from town records?
I thought it was from the assessor, the assessor referred to them as, um...
Yeah, the assessor lists building, one is conventional, all other structures as camps. This is consistent with the argument that, well, that's his argument. It says one bed, one bedroom for structure three, or built nineteen forty. It says, um, one bedroom accessory use camp. Two-bedroom accessory use camp on structure four.
So I guess, what makes it an accessory use camp as opposed to a single-family, a, a small, single-family home?
Right.
Well, it's been, I mean, if the assessor is doing it, maybe it's because he probably deemed it not to be.
It may not have had water or something.
If...
Can we see that document, that it's town documents?
Yeah, I know, that's the thing, is the, are these accurate?
I, I saw that. That was one of the emails that Colleen, it was in one of the emails that Colleen sent out last week.
Yeah, it was, it was, with all that, and it looks very formal and, and probably...
You sent it out to us, from Robert Laporte?
Yeah, it was from Robert Laporte.
Oh.
It wasn't from the town council or anything, but it's a...
This comes off the, um, assessor's database.
Assessor's map, yeah, that's what I thought, but I wanted to double-check.
He got the information from the assessor.
Okay.
Assessor called them camps.
Yeah, right.
Cottage, not cottage, just camps, yeah.
There are camps, I mean, there's no...
Which, which is this, 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 the whole lot?
Is, is he looking at the use code, what is use code one-three-two-zero?
I don't know. I'd have to look it up, I have no idea.
So which building is this?
Um, this one is...
You can look on the, the notes on this, too.
It was all dated to one person, right? This was prior to Mr. Larkin buying it, right?
Yes, the bio.
Is this his footage, or is this the assessor's?
This isn't the right one.
Is this the actual assessor's words, or are these his?
I don't know, I, I think this is all the assessor information here. And I, this two-bedroom accessory use camp, it has to be, that's what I want to know, because this is very the assessor.
So did, yeah, so did the assessor call them camps, or did, did Mr. Laporte call them camps?
Yeah, camps, little total.
Sixty thousand, Robin Hall.
Three-bedroom principal building.
Is that, in the letter, is that, did...
Building two or four.
Is that on the assessor's documentation, though, or just a Mr.?
On the, on the assessor's, the first home...
Or is that just Mr. Laporte's version?
He's reading it.
Now, this is, this is the town website.
So the first one is a wood shingle residential conventional. The second one is a wood shingle, wood shingle, average camp. Third structure is reda, residential camp average. And the third one is a camp, residential average, and that's...
Style is a camp. She's a style.
Says camp.
Style, it has a tutor.
We're probably, no.
No.
The public media is closed, I'm sorry, we're gonna have to sort through this without your help.
But is that like a definition that the assessor makes? I mean, that's kind of...
Yeah, they do, the assessor makes those definitions.
He's, so he's defining it as a camp?
Yes, when they put it on an assessor map, it's a G I, G I S map, I believe.
And he taxes it accordingly, like, is it, oh, it's, oh, really?
I believe so.
You know what I mean, like, I would, if it actually has any, like, legal binding, what he calls it camp, or if that's just...
Right, but if the assessor assesses a, a certain way, right? So this is probably a tax, or, and again, I'm not a lawyer, and I don't want to claim that I know any more than I, just the way it's listed, yeah. It's listed as a camp, it's listed as a camp.
Yeah, so what is listed as a camp today, if this project were to go through, would be listed as a single-family home in the future, correct?
Well...
We'd have to ask the assessor.
The field, the building attributes has a field and a description. The field says, "Style, description, camp." Uh, it doesn't determine it to be a camp as much as it sounds in that direction. The style of the home, is it like a garrison or a split? It says camp, I don't know.
Look up camp, what is that?
Like the definition of camp? Like the Google definition? I mean, maybe that's a question for the assessor, but I don't, yeah.
"A place with temporary accommodations of huts, tents," and it goes on. That's the definition of camp.
It is, in fact, a style as camp.
Yeah, but, but style is conventional, which is the big main house, a conventional residential home, conventional home, right, conventional. So, and then the other three are camps.
Right.
And it's, I mean...
One's listed as a primary structure on there, right? And then the other three are subsequent two-bedroom, one-bedroom camps, right? That's what it says on it, right?
Yeah, one's a conventional residential.
Right.
Which would go with...
Oh, here, look.
Mr. Chairman, is it okay if I speak?
Uh, Mr. Negron, um... I don't know the answer to that, I, uh, I think we are, we, we can vote to reopen the hearing.
I'm sorry, I forgot about that.
What you're having a problem doing, and, and I would honestly probably prefer you over, over the, uh, audience, not because I don't like the audience, because I think they can get, hopefully, an impartial opinion.
I just couldn't hold it asking. But that's okay.
Could I get a motion to reopen the public hearing?
I'll make a motion to reopen the public hearing.
Second, if you're all in favor?
Uh, yeah.
Okay, Mr. Chairman, if we, if I was gonna make the decision based on use, chapter forty-eight would, would reinforce that, because accessory structures, for what I hear, the three incident, customary incidental structures, incidental to the main structure, will be considered accessory structures, not residential homes. And I will read the definition by chapter forty-eight, and it says, "Accessory structures. Accessory structures are customarily incidental to the existing principal structure, structure, or use of the premises. Ordinances bylaws typically regulate the location, size, and type of accessory structure to be allowed within a residential district, and any set recreational structure as one of them."
But it's a residential, uh, accessory structure with a kitchen, a bathroom, heat. I, 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 it's difficult.
Should we close the public hearing again?
I think we should, yeah, I don't know.
I'll make a motion to close the public hearing.
I think we, oh, to Philip to ask, we'd like to rebut, uh, Mr. Negron.
Would you like to rebut, Phil?
Again, I don't want to go down a, a whole rattle. I think that you, the, the bottom line is, is it, it's already been proven that these four structures have been used continually for the last two years as full-time residential dwellings. There's a, there's a separate provision of the bylaw that says that a non-conforming use that's been in continual use for two years is grandfathered, so long as it hasn't been discontinued for two years prior to. So obviously, these have been used as year-round residential structures up and point to the time that we've made this application. We've already presented proof of that. Whether the assessor calls them, whatever the assessor wants to call them, doesn't change what's on the ground, which is full-time use, as proven by the utility bills, by the sidewalk, the nature of those properties, are there individual residential dwellings that were rented out to separate people that lived there s, as residential dwellings? So that's what you have that exists today. And those could be rebuilt and, in the same footprint and different foot, footprints, and rented out year-round today. There would be no requirement for this board to weigh in on that. So I think we're getting way off a field here, looking at that issue. You want to look at the use issue, I'm not telling you you can't, but I, we can't change the fact that those structures are grandfathered for residential uses.
Thank you.
That's just my little take on that. I'm sorry, the case law does say that the decision...
Yet another attorney, I will allow it, yeah.
Case law does say that the decision is to be made on the basis of the degree of change. The, the town council has said that, uh, the Paul case says that, that, and he refers to that, that's your basis for determination. It's not whether they were used before. Certainly, they could have four eight-hundred-square-foot beautiful houses, and it's, that, that might be fine, but he's not talking about that. He's talking about a degree of change. And one of the pieces of determining degree is a characterization by the assessor that they're camps, not principal residences, which goes to the, the, uh, uh, point brought by the board, that, that it's, it's, it is a degree of change that is significant. And if it's a degree of change that's significant, it should not be allowed.
Thank you. Quick, someone make a motion.
I'll make a motion to close the public hearing.
Second.
Second, my Steve, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I, I would entertain a motion if everyone has exhausted their questions and has a thought on how they want to vote about this. I can promise you all, this is extremely difficult for me personally. I am, I am absolutely unsure of the right thing to do, and I'm gonna do my best. That's all I can tell you.
I'll make a motion, in, in affirmative.
You're glad, too? I did talk with, uh, Paul Harvard about a motion and how that should be worded. I think, uh, a vote, which is always, always worded to the affirmative, would be to overturn the building commissioner's determination on the lots that does not by right allow the replacement of the three homes. That's, that's pretty much the word, the verbiage that we like, you can read that. So we want to vote in the affirmative, that we're either supporting or denying, but we want to always vote to the affirmative.
The motion is gonna be to, to...
Support the applicant.
That doesn't, that doesn't make sense.
To overturn, but building commissioners' denial letter.
Would say that you're not supporting the building inspector, you're overturning. A no vote would be that you're supporting the building inspector. Uh, you can read, I mean, that's, that's why I asked, because I wanted to have the verbiage, right?
Steve has a question.
I have no idea what I would be upholding, what that motion would be.
So it was a vote in affirmative, which means you're supporting the applicant to overturn the building inspector's denial letter, which would in fact allow the applicant to build three homes.
That is the vote in the affirmative?
Yes.
The vote in the affirmative is essentially for the applicant.
Yes.
Okay.
Because he has applied, and we want to, we want to, want a motion in the affirmative. Your vote is your vote.
Okay.
If you vote yes, you're voting for the applicant, essentially, and you're overturning the...
I understand, thank you.
Yes, okay. So I will make a motion to overturn the building commissioner's determination that the lot does not by right allow the replacement of three homes, as well as the proposed placement of the three structures within the lot at twenty-four through thirty, second lane.
Correct.
The building inspector's July twenty-ninth, two thousand and one letter?
Correct.
Second? Two thousand and twenty-one.
I second.
Second, my Steve. All in favor of overturning the inspectors?
Aye.
All opposed?
Aye.
Four to one.
Uh, opposed.
Thank you all for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board.
I've got to be honest with you, I think by right, uh, he would win. You good? Can we discuss? How can I lead an escort?
Thank you for making that offer.
It was hard, it was very hard, because by right, it's beyond degrees, it was very hard.
I can tell you that, I believe.
It was very hard, it was very hard. I make a motion to adjourn. All in favor?
Motion to adjourn? Motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn?
Do we have to do the minutes first?
Are we gonna do minutes? We're not doing minutes?
Who's the judge?
Are we doing minutes? Are we motioning to adjourn, are we doing minutes?
Nancy usually does all the minutes.
Okay, so we're not adjourning?
Okay, so we're not adjourning?
I did reply an email for the minute, like, an hour ago, two hours ago, something like that.
Excuse me, folks, we are still continuing, so if you guys wouldn't mind taking that to the hall, we appreciate it, thank you, have a good night. It's hard, because by right, it wasn't about use, it wasn't about, like, the nature, it really, I'm sorry, made sense. The, the nature is significantly changed, I couldn't get past it.
So, at the end of the day, I think that they were single-family homes, that's just what I believe, and, and so, if they are single-family homes, by right, they can, I, I didn't like it, I don't even like anything about it, but I'm just trying to.
But even if, even if so, even if so, building nonconformity to nonconformity, even if you're building nonconformity to nonconformity.
I don't think we should discuss this right as a group.
Oh.
Yeah, I, I, I don't think we should, I think we should, we have to, but we have to motion to close the meeting, and we have to do minutes, right, Steve, you were?
We didn't close the meeting, we're still open, we're still public.
I did respond to the email for the minute.
Yeah, we're still public, so, we're not violating.
Okay, we're not, okay.
Oh, because it's not closed, so we actually still can discuss it.
Okay.
We're not closed.
But you can discuss after you vote, I'm new, so I'm, I'm trying to follow the rules just so.
On live television?
Let's go over the mi- let's go over the minutes, waiting on you, Colleen.
Okay, minutes and minutes. All in favor of approving the minutes of?
I, I sent an email.
Excuse me, gentlemen, I'm sorry, gentlemen.
Hello.
Folks.
Hello.
Folks!
Still in session?
Please, I'm sorry, we are still in session.
Oh, sorry.
Thank you. Thank you, appreciate it.
That was Jamie's mom voice, I like that.
I was about to break out my drill sergeant voice there.
That was, I was gonna say, that was an army voice. I listen.
Okay, let's find the agenda, get the heck out of the alternative here. Motion to approve the minutes of ten-seven-twenty-one, with the changes, uh, since.
Submitted by Steve and Nancy.
Submitted by Steve and Nancy.
Nancy's are already done, so Steve, yep, with the changes Steve's just sent me.
Yep.
I need a motion.
I make a motion to approve the minutes for seven, ten-seven and.
Six-three.
Six-three, twenty-twenty, to include the changes by Steve and Nancy.
I'll second, stuck in the motion.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Unanimous? Good luck with your minutes.
Another motion? I make a motion to adjourn.
I'll second.
No second needed.
No second needed.
Oh, yeah.
Aye.
Aye.
Just on a roll.